This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah.
I'll tell you some stories. Basically. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled August 5th City Council meeting. You could all rise and join us with a pledge allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have the screens yet. Screens? Before we get started, I wanted to let everybody know that Councilmember Engle will be attending remote pursuant to AB 2449. Mr. Engle.
Hold on.
Well, you're on mute there. Hold on, I mean.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick statement that I'm participating remotely due to a contagious illness that prevents in-person attendance. There are no other adult individuals in the room, and I think that that should cover it. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. At this time, if we can have a roll call, please.
All right. Mayor Bellinger?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
Councilmember Engle?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Thank you, and just so everybody knows, due to Councilman Engle's remote status, we will conducting roll call votes on every action item for this evening. At this point, let's go on to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Is there anybody here at the dice that would like to pull any items on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to pull three.
I'd like to pull one and three.
Okay. Is there anybody in the... And we have one from the audience for number five.
That, Mr. Mayor, I'll approve to... I'll prove... Make a motion to approve the consent calendar items two, four, and six.
We have a second to that.
I'll second that.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Strowman?
Here. Yes.
Walker?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Hagan?
Aye.
Engle?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll start with item number three. That would be Mayor Pro Tim?
There were a few different things in this that I felt warranted putting it on a different agenda for a more thorough discussion. I was hoping that we could potentially do that.
You're just looking to move this to another meeting or to have a more open discussion off of consent?
Correct.
What would be the protocol for that? Are we allowed to... If we have a motion to that status, we're allowed to do that, correct?
Yeah. I... I'm sorry, I missed that because I was dealing with another issue related to Councilman Engle and just making sure he stays on the video.
Okay.
What was the specific question?
For consent item number three, I was hoping we can move it to a different agenda so that it can be, I think, more thoroughly examined and...
Yeah, so you can...
Discussion.
Yeah, so this council can either take a motion, or if they feel like there's consensus, they can give direction essentially to table as to a future meeting. If you... Unless you... Really up to you. And if you want a specific date, I'd recommend you put that in your motion.
I have no specific date, but so you need consensus or you want me to say?
I need to make sure there's at least three of you that are okay pulling it off this agenda.
I would also agree that I would like more of an explanation and discussion of this item.
So you had pulled that also, Councilman Strowman. What were your thoughts on this topic before we keep on going on that?
So I respect what Mayor Pro Tim and Councilor Walker noted. I've done some research on this, had a discussion with the interim city manager, and it's my opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. French, but essentially what this is asking is if the city of Escalon wants to be part of a group of city neighboring cities and participate in the... Get the verbiage right. The San Joaquin Regional Housing Fund. And reviewing the documentation that was provided, essentially SJCOG, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but SJCOG is looking at us to adopt a resolution to join into this program, and the purpose of the program is to make up any difference towards affordable housing projects throughout SJCOG. And it's my opinion that, quite honestly, I don't think this has anything to do with the city of Escalon. I understand it's a two-step process. The first process is to join the coalition, and then after the coalition, then if there are any money... If they need any money that's put towards this fund, they'll come to us at a later date. And what's concerning to me is about a month... Less than a month ago, this city council passed a lean and mean budget. Yes, it's a balanced budget. Yes, it's lean and mean, but as we were told by the finance director that it... There's no wiggle room. It's very tight. So instead of pushing this and adopting a resolution to participate in San Joaquin Regional Housing Fund, I would like to make a motion to kill this measure and review this at a later date after we get this city back to financial solvency.
Personally, I would think that'd be a little bit harsh right now without all the facts. I think we have Ms. Anderson here for SJCOG. If we so choose to move it to a future date for further discussion, I think it would be great if we moved it to a future agenda before we quickly decide to make a motion to eliminate this from the city. There's a lot more information than what you just said there in this program. There's no current physical... Or I mean fiscal obligation to Escalon, but I think Ms. Anderson, if she's given the opportunity to talk, if we brought it back to a later date, could answer questions a little bit more diligently than I could on this program.
Well, could we ask questions now?
As a consent item, are we going to do this in a full-blown motion or are we going to move this to a later date?
If the council wants to pull this for the separate discussion like any other consent item, they can do that.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to move it to a different agenda date, no specific date in mind, to have a more thorough discussion because, like I said, there's a few things in it that are concerning to me, and I... As far as, you know, looking at the best interests of Escalon, making sure that we aren't taking advantage of. So that's why I want to make sure that the questions I have are more thoroughly investigated, and I think I need more time for that.
Okay.
So we do have a couple of different options. It sounds like time is requested. We could pull this from the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a calendar that is taking in one action. We could pull it like it's a normal action item. We can have a staff report. We can get public testimony. We can do all of that before any action is taken, even if that action was to continue the item. Or we could simply move it to another date.
I mean, I would rather just move it to another day and allow the council to be able to individually look into the steeper.
Have your business cards, Ms. Anderson, for us so we can facilitate some questions directly to you before our next meeting possibly? For the various questions? That would be great. It seems like we have a consensus to at least move it to a future date, is what I'm hearing. Do we need to make a motion for that?
I would like to make a motion, just so it's a clear record. You made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A roll call vote, please, to move this item to another agenda.
Strowman?
Nay.
Walker?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Hagan?
Aye.
Engle?
Aye.
All right. Item one, Councilman Strowman, you had pulled that item for future consent.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification. On page nine of 89, the one, two, three, fourth... Oh, on... Not page nine, my apologies. Page 10, third paragraph down. I just would like to make a clarification. I went back and I reviewed the minutes, and with this is in regards to the sales tax I noted 1.95 million would come to the city of Escalon and stay within the city of Escalon. The sales tax measure is not anticipated to bring an additional 1.95 million to the city. The total revenue anticipated by this measure is a total of 1.95 million. So based off of the projections, these... If the sales tax measure is passed, it would bring an additional $900,000 to the city of Escalon. So if you take the $900,000 anticipated for the sales tax revenue plus what the city generated in sales tax revenue that stayed within this city last year of 1.05 million, that's how the number of 1.95 million was derived. I don't want the public to have the impression that it's 1.59 million above what the city currently receives in the sales tax revenue. So if we could make that clarification somehow.
Well, I mean, I think the technical issue is it has to reflect whatever was said, and these... But the minutes for this meeting will reflect that you clarified what you meant by that last statement. So these minutes for today's meeting will set the record straight, but we can't...
Right.
Even if something was inadvertently or mistakenly said last meeting, we stopped this record, obviously, what was said, but again, your comments now will be reflected in today's minutes.
Fair enough. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last meeting.
Do we have a second on item one?
A second. A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strowman?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Engle?
Aye.
All right. Last on the consent calendar, we had item number five, to adopt the resolution XX24, authorize the city manager to sign and file an updated construction application for funding for well 1A. Someone from the audience had pulled that one for further discussion.
Kurt Danzger. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Reading through the agenda item, I'm not clear on what it's actually saying to us. Specifically, one of the questions I have is background discussion. Says on May... Gives the date the council approved the initial resolution to apply for the revolving funds for well number one. The other two resolutions were, and I go to the second one, which is resolution pledging and dedicating the net water revenue and water enterprise fund to the payment of the updated drinking water revolving fund, construction, financing, well 1A. Can you clarify that? What is the net proceeds? Is that everything in the enterprise fund?
Yeah, so basically what it is committing the city to is paying back the loan with the revenues generated from the ratepayers, so from the water enterprise.
Is that based on the rates that have been increasing?
Yes. And it's based on any rate that has been adopted, but yes, that last rate increase five years ago that increased incrementally over the last five years, that would include that as well.
Since we haven't... We're not scheduled to increase next year. Right?
Correct.
So do we have enough money to repay this loan without going into further debt?
Yes, based on our calculations, the enterprise fund has enough money to pay off the loan over...
I think that would have been critical information in this agenda item, to have that, so you can see that we're... What the existing debt is for well one and what the increase is going to be for well one. So that's where I was a little confused. Is the...
Well, I just want to clarify that point. The city has a loan for a portion of the total project costs. One way or the other, the enterprise fund is paying off that project. It is either going to be through a low-interest loan through the state or directly from the enterprise fund. So we have the funds to cover it. Now there's a little interest, of course, but we'll be collecting more money over the long term as well. So either way, it's being paid off through the enterprise funds.
I understand we're paying it off, but it would have been nice to have it itemized. Does that include the Tracy money for the drinking water project for SSGID?
The Tracy funds have been specifically earmarked for any surface water project that moves forward. They are not being used for well water.
I just got confused on that one. So they are set aside specifically for the pipeline coming to the city.
Yes.
So when it says... Let me go back to it. The net enterprise funds, that money from Tracy had in last year to have been included in that enterprise fund. It used to be a separate line item. Now it disappeared, if you will, and been put into that. So I was curious if that was going to include that, too.
Well, I think we're not saying the exact same thing. The enterprise fund in water includes everything within the world of water in the city. There are different categories within the enterprise fund. So there are separate allocations for certain projects. You have a surface water project. You have our regular well maintenance. So this resolution that you're referring to is meant to state that the city will pay back with the funds collected for that portion of the project or that, you know, that part of what we're doing in the water operating for the loan. If there's a separate project, the surface water project, for instance, that's collecting money and is set aside specifically for that purpose, that's not going to be included in what we're talking about, but it's still within the whole of the enterprise.
It would have been nice that it be said here.
Okay.
Because it's not clear. All it says is dedicating its net revenues and water enterprise fund to the payment of that. So that's a totality of whatever the fund is in my mind. So if that's... If I'm incorrect, or if that's not what it was meant to be said, maybe we ought to pull this item and get a little bit more information, break out these debts and what the payments are going to be so that you have a better, clearer picture of what you're actually approving. I think that'll take you a lot of time. So this will be one loan at that point? They're just going to use the same loan?
Correct.
And... Well, those are my questions there, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on item five? If not, I will take a motion on said item on what we'd like to do next. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution XX24 authorizing city manager to sign and file an updated construction application for funding the well 1A improvement project.
I'll second that.
We need a roll call vote, please.
Strowman?
Nay.
Walker?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes. Aye.
Engle?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Next up, staff communication and updates, number seven, quarterly update for the Commission on Aging.
Just reporting on some of the completed after we did, as you know, we did our lunch and learn. I think we discussed it last time. We continued to have a couple more since. Oh, sorry. So obviously, we had someone come out from the DA's office. We had social security out. We had... The Veterans Administration actually sent someone from Sacramento that specializes in rural community. The French Camp VA facility sent people out to discuss all the new services being offered there, and we've actually already had several veterans in the community transfer their services there so they don't have to drive out to Palo Alto and, I believe, Sacramento. So some of them were able to get a lot of one-on-one with these case managers, so solved a lot of red tape for a few. It went pretty well. Congressional services came out, and I think the highlight, although they were all good presentations, the highlight was El Consilio came out and did a week-long training for seniors 60 on up on computer use. You'd be surprised. I did learn. I did sit through it with them because I wanted to see what they were learning, and we realized that we probably need more of those classes beyond just how to set up an email and maybe how to open up your online accounts. So the Consilio will be coming back if we get at least 10 more seniors, which my understanding that registration's going pretty well. Seniors who attend do get a free Chromebook. The goal is to get seniors into the idea that nowadays, everybody wants bills paid online to avoid fraud. You know, they should have their, like, my social security accounts where they can go check letters that social security is actually sending them. The scams that are going on right now are very convincing, and seniors are actually falling for them at an alarming rate. So the idea behind the whole computer part is, like it or not, we're entering this phase where nobody wants to send mail out. They're duplicating the letters. They look exactly like they should be if it's an official letter coming from whether it's the VA or social security or whoever, and they look 100% convincing because they're just copying them, and anybody can copy them nowadays, and seniors are calling those numbers and giving up their personal information. The fraud being committed against seniors is in the multimillion dollars just in California. So the idea behind the Consilio is they got a grant to help seniors try to navigate this new world and take care of things online and hopefully... And be more safe about it as well on how they do that. We are probably going to have to look at extending those classes beyond what the Consilio did, but again, we're trying to register more seniors for that. We are opening up our lunch and learn. We had originally just planned it for two months, and we're just going to open it up at this point so the county and state agencies that want to come and talk to our seniors can do so. It's just easier to just open it up and say, hey, Tuesday, Thursdays, you know, whatever works for you, as opposed to trying to go out of our way to coordinate these calendars because these are, you know, presenters. They're pretty booked. The senior café has been postponed till after election because the requests we were getting had more to do with election than it did with meeting senior needs. So we figured, you know what? We're just going to put that off, and then we don't have to worry about all the issues when you start bringing election into it. So once the election's done, we'll open that up, and then at least we know whoever's showing up, hey, that's after the election, so there's no issues there. The social services part, what we're trying to do, just so you know, because seniors are struggling with paying their bills online, being able to access that, you'd be surprised how many seniors don't even have the internet. They answer phone calls on their cell phones. They do not use them for anything else. We're trying to set up computers, like a two-person terminal computer in the senior lunchroom. That is our goal so that when seniors need help, they can show up maybe early to the lunch program and help... Had someone help them through and navigate and sign up for stuff or check on stuff or whatever they may need, whether it's, you know, helping them navigate PG&E or something more, you know, whatever they may need. Because again, you'd be surprised how many do not have internet at home, do not have computer access at home, and don't navigate something that we tend to take for granted, like going online and paying a bill or looking something up online. So we're trying to set that up there because that's a trusted program for them, that they know the people that volunteer there, and then we will be setting up a similar terminal situation out at the new Escalon Food Bank facility so that they have some options when they need help. So that's one of the aspects we're trying to do, and it saves me and... Or Sherry sitting back there trying to figure out how to go do a bunch of home visits. Hopefully, they'll, you know, they'll come to us as opposed to us trying to figure out how to navigate all that time. That's... We've got the other stuff that was on my list. Again, in the spring of next year and in fall next year, we're looking at being part of either a resource fair, bringing together the rural communities, and having a county come out and do, you know, they do the free health clinics and so forth, the checkups and trying to do something. The smaller communities have been unable to pull one off where anybody shows up to present because they're considered too small individually. Nobody wants to take the time out of their day. So we're hoping if we pull together, we can arrange one that covers, you know, Collegeville, Farmington, Linden, Ripon, you know, smaller communities and kind of pull that together into a sort of a health fair that maybe that way people are from the county are willing to actually show up and service, you know, our people out here this far out. So that's kind of what's on the agenda. So...
Great.
Any questions?
Keep up the good work, keeping everybody informed.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, item eight, SSGID Service Water Treatment Plant Project Financing Presentation.
Sorry for the delay there. We are trying to figure out how to both keep the remote council member and the presentation up, but I will just do a lead-in to Bradley. We have Bradley with our Dura here to give the bulk of the presentation. The last time we were before the council on this item was mid-April. At that time, there were a number of questions surrounding the total fiscal position of the city and of this project. So what we have before you is really a look at where we are financially with this project, and I think you'll see that we are in a better position than we had thought we were four months ago. So we do want to walk through just where we are, how much funds we have in the bank, what the gap is to the rest of the project, and then various options, financing and funding options, to close that gap. This is not as much about the availability of groundwater, the challenges associated with groundwater. That's the topic that we covered in the last presentation, but we will touch on that because it is background to the financial situation. So that is the lead-in. I'll turn it over to Bradley, and feel free to ask any questions you have throughout the time here so that we can get this all accurate.
I mean?
Yeah.
Can you do the minimize of the go-to?
No, we have to keep Jeremy, like...
Yeah, but put the go-to on top and then make it smaller. I mean, as a smaller box, not take up the whole screen. So make the PowerPoint the whole screen and then put this...
There you go.
There you go.
No.
No. Yeah. Yeah. And then just make it Jeremy. And then make that bigger.
The whole screen, top right-hand corner.
I don't know if your clicker's going to work, though.
We're going to try it and see what happens.
Top right-hand corner.
It'll work?
Yeah.
Good try.
It works.
Hey.
Good job, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. As Mr. French was saying, we're going to cover the background of the project very briefly and then talk about the financing component of it, where we are financially, and yes, please stop me and ask questions along the way. As you probably recall, there are pros and cons to either staying with the existing well system or moving over to a surface water program. The surface water program, on the pro side, you certainly get diversification, water quality and water quantity. We get reliability as well as resilience. The cons are it's more expensive upfront, and we end up with more pipeline inventory to have to maintain over the life of the project. On the existing well side of things, on the pros, it's a known commodity. It's a system that already exists. The operators understand it. It functions. On the con side is that the consistency of water and regulations are unknown, as well as we're expecting to see... In addition to that, we have an aging system and you'll see a slide in here that kind of puts it into perspective. You also remember that the background here is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It was, it's the legislation that everyone is trying to adhere to. We won't spend any more time on it except to have it as the backdrop for this. The existing system is a series of wells. As you can see here, we've had 12 wells total, eight of which are now defunct. And as you move over to the right, you start to see that those new wells are deeper than the original wells and that's a trend that we're going to continue to see over time.
Real quick on those eight that are no longer functioning.
Yep.
Can they be salvaged or they are truly dead, not be able to be recovered without basically drilling a new well?
Yes, so there may be an opportunity to rehabilitate them by drilling deeper and dealing with source type of treatment. Depends on the well itself and how it's currently performing or, you know, how we might be able to tap back into it.
Do you happen to know how long these have been shut down?
Yeah, some of them have been defunct for a long time. This gives you a very quick snapshot of the serviceable life of the existing wells that we currently have. About 50 years for a well and you'll see that well 1A, which was a topic of discussion previously, is anticipated to be installed next year. It gives us 50 years. Everything else is, we're on the last half of the existing well system. Because of that, we came up with this, or someone came up with this surface water idea. It certainly wasn't my idea, but it is a, it is a project that's taking water from SSGID and bringing it in for all those pros that we talked about before. What you probably notice here, it's not, it's not normal that you would come to city council and actually have a project that's less expensive this time than it was the last time, but this one is by a million bucks. And it is because we had a line item in here for the SSGID connection and that we were originally told by SSGID would be about $1.1 million. They have backed way off on that and said, nope, it's a little more like $100,000. So a little upside surprise, but here's where we're at. So in the water rate study of 2019, this project was identified. It was included in the rate, that rate study that was done there and the adopted rate that came out of there. You'll notice here that for the first five years, it was anticipated to be able to collect $6.1 million. The second five years was a, it was, the collection was front-loaded in the project, right? And so 6.1 million for the first five years and then 4.2 million for the subsequent five years. At the end of the 10-year period, $10.4 million is already in the existing rate study for the project. Okay? So before, let's go back, we were at 14.4, 14.5 million dollars. Now we're, you know, 10.4 million dollars in the program. So there's a gap in there, okay? So if you play this out, I just gave a chart here that shows you what this sort of looks like and how it's being tiered in the collection, right? $1.2 million a year versus $850,000 a year for the subsequent five years gives you the 10.4 million bucks. So if you take 14.48, subtract 10.4, you end up with a gap at the end of that 10-year period of 4 million bucks, plus or minus. However, the city has been very smart and started to sell water off to Tracy and has set aside money that's been sold off to Tracy to help close this gap. So what we're showing here is $1.8 million and has been collected from the city of Tracy for the water rights that have been sold off. So all I did was took that same and just said, look, imagine from today on, there's no more payment from Tracy. What does that really look like? You projected out to the end and you're now at $12.2 million in a fund for a project that's funded or has a budget of 14.48 million.
Stop it for just real quick on a question.
Absolutely.
When did we officially start collecting money from the city of Tracy on this project?
2006.
Okay, so we've, this money does not include the fact we had to buy in with SSGID. Is that for that's paid for for yours calculation? I just want to make sure that, not double dipping on the same fund twice for the calculations here.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bradley?
Yes.
So the rate study is going to gen, is anticipated to generate 10.8 million?
10.4 million.
10.4.
That's correct.
And then the money from Tracy?
1.8.
What we currently.
Okay. Yep.
Which leaves a delta of 2.271.
That's correct.
In the out year of 2029.
That's right.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a really important observation because we're talking about trying to figure out how to get prepared before 2029 to get the pipeline installed. Right, so to be fair, what we really need to look at is some other date that's before 2029 to have funds available to go to construction. Not saying that it's going to be in 2026. What I'm saying is that's probably the fastest we can get it to construction. So this would be the delta that, that we would be looking for, for funding of the project. Does that make sense?
However, we are still collecting money from the city of Tracy through 20, I mean, at this point, if we don't have this project by 2026, we are continuing to collect those monies.
That's correct.
And that is part of the funding as well.
Yep. And if you look, the way that this chart was built, you'll see the orange line and the blue line are parallel in that last five, five years and that's just simply saying, hey, look, let's assume that we don't get any more money from Tracy at all.
We have no reason at this point to suggest that that relationship would change. We do collect about almost $105,000 per year, 104,699 per year for sale for the city of Tracy.
I was under the impression on this project, we weren't going to use our full allotment and we were still going to sell the excess to the city of Tracy.
That is.
Is that still the intended? So there is technically a little bit more money there potentially?
Potentially.
Okay.
Potentially.
Yeah.
I think part of the sale is just, you know, to give the city some money to be able to implement this. So if we start implementing, is that relationship still there? Those things are to be determined.
Online from start of construction to finish, two years?
Uh, yeah, two, two and a half, somewhere in there.
Go back to the slide when the other wells are dying.
Okay, that one?
Yeah. So well nine is going to be dead by the time we put this online and another four or five years for the next one, then we have a little bit more space. Just trying to see what the damage is if we have to replace slash upgrade those wells that are going to be
Yes.
in sad state of repair at that point in time.
Well, hopefully we'll be getting surface water.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's a cost there. If we don't go to this, wells are going to come due at three, four million a pop.
Understood. And then, I was just going to say, it's a well 1A is about a $3 million project at this point right now, 3 million.
And wellhead treatment for potential contaminants could be close to $1 million per wellhead in future years.
So basically you're looking at 4.8 million where that's the delta, what we would need to.
Your math is, your math is right. That's correct. Yeah, and we'll get there.
Okay.
So.
Hold on, we got a question in the audience real quick here.
Hold on. Do you want to do?
Actually, hold on, hold on, Mr. Zenger.
I would just recommend being public comment all at once.
Okay, hold your question if you could. Thank you, Bradley.
No problem. So here, here we were with 12.2 million dollars in funding, that 14.8 or 14.4 million dollars worth of a project gives us a delta at the, at the tail end of this at 2.2 million. However, to be responsible sometime around 2026, we'll have about $9.6 million available to us for a 14.4 million dollar project, gives us a delta of 4.8 million dollars. That is Mr. Strowman's number.
Actually, it's your number Bradley, I was just reading off the screen.
So, so here's, here's what we've done. We went back and we looked, well, how is it that we can afford this? What, what are our options? And we have one option that looks like it's 95% coming in. It's a $1.1 million grant from Representative Harder for the community project funding. And while the money is not in the bank, the promise is there. So what we've done is we've said, okay, well, let's assume that we have the $1.1 million. It seems like a safe bet. If that's the case, then in this particular case, we have $3.7 million worth of a gap that we really have to figure out.
And just to highlight that, so you recall last year, we applied for monies through Harder's CPF grant and were not successful. Those monies went to the city of Ripon for a similar project. We did apply this year. We requested $2 million. We have received indication from Harder's office in early July, July 3rd, that we have secured $1.1 million. Now again, they, you know, highlight things could change or the number could fluctuate a little bit, but we are confident that those funds will be received from Harder's office for the CPF grant, $1.1 million.
I don't want to take anything away from you, but I just, what Jalen just said is very important because for the first time in a very long time, Josh Harder actually remembered Escalon.
So noted. So we have opportunities here to close the gap. And we have looked at over a dozen grant opportunities. We've boiled it down to two grants and a low-cost loan. And we put it in order of probability of success, top to bottom. Okay? And the reason we did that is we thought it would be fair to you guys to say fundamentally, this is where we think the money can come from and the likelihood of this, we're going to talk about the first likelihood, that's the best likelihood, all the way to the end, which is who knows exactly how that's going to go down. Okay? So we'll, we'll start with the low-cost loan. And what I did was, is I went through and I did the math to figure out kind of what it means to the rate payer from their bi-monthly bill if we take a 2.38% loan, which is consistent with the, the terms that we've seen before from the infrastructure, from IBank. And then it's a 20-year term, it's compounded annually, it's paid semi-annually, and the probability of getting that is pretty good. So we suggested that was 90%. So if you look at the funding gap, it's 3.7 million dollars, the interest on that loan is a million dollars. You boil it all the way to the bottom and you see that the average current bill on a bi-monthly basis is $250. This adds $33.89 to that bill for a $283.39 bill or an increase of 13.6%. Okay? That's the loan, no grants or anything else on top of what, or it is already coming from Harder.
For 10 years?
10 years. Yeah, this is a payback of this loan in, from the rate payers of 10 years. We didn't, even though it's a 20-year term, we didn't spread it over 20 years. We said we'd like to recover it from rate payers in the first 10.
A quick question. The interest rate, is that fixed?
It's a fixed rate, yes. And this is the best information, it's market volatility, right? This is the best information we currently have.
Bradley, in your experience, when a municipality is awarded CPF funding, is it just a one-and-done or can it be multiple awards?
It, I, it's hard to tell what the, what the politicians will do. You can certainly ask more than once, but I think as we've already seen demonstrated, it wasn't successful before, it was given to a neighbor and now being given to Escalon and, and not giving it twice, trying to spread it around.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Could we apply again next year?
Absolutely.
Lower that funding gap.
You could certainly, you could certainly apply.
Okay.
Bradley, I do have a quick question on that page. That proposed new average bill cost, is that a locked-in rate for the term of that loan or would residents experience an increase?
No, that's a fixed rate for the term.
Thank you.
Is that what you're, is that what you're asking, the term of the loan?
As far as the rate payer, I was just wanting to confirm, you know, if this was, you know, proposed 283.89, that would be the residence bill for the next 10 years. There would be no increases.
Not associated to this project.
So for rate study questionnaires and whatnot, you're covering a 20-year loan in 10 years. Does that mean that in 10 years, this 33.89 a month will automatically, or every two months will drop off our rate payer's bills? Otherwise, if it's not, then you need to make it 20 years in my opinion. Why would you take a big chunk over 10 if it's a 20-year loan? You're not going to, are you saving money by paying it off early? You're going to sit on the money? What's the advantage of going to 10 instead of 20 to match the loan? Rate payer's getting hit everywhere. What can we do?
You'll typically see increases over a five-year period in 10 years at the outside. You know, generally see it over a longer period than that just because it is, you know, it's so long, right, that you're increasing. Now, you're right, what it does is increase it each year less, but I mean, that's just typically what you do.
So.
You're asking if it's going to sunset?
Basically, yeah.
That's what he's asking.
So if we did decide to pay it off on the 20-year, would that be half per, per bi-monthly payment? So it wouldn't be instead the 33 increase, it would be a 16 increase, is that correct?
Yeah, you just, you would just double the number of payments and reduce the payment in half.
Okay, and the interest rate stays the same whether it's paid off over 10 or 20?
That's right.
That's correct.
Yes. And then also to help with this narrative, the previous rate study done in 2019 also figured low-interest loans to be a 10-year payback even though you have an option or available term of 20 years. So it's, it's simply consistent with the previous rate study.
So a minimum of 16, could be anywhere over 16, that 33 just reduces it down to the 10-year, but we could do 15-year. I mean, we, you could do anything under the 20-year.
Yeah, and as I, as I understand it also, IBank will, will go up to 30 years, but that's not been traditional.
Right.
All right. So that's the low-interest loan. No additional grant information. So what we did is we looked at the other grant opportunities and this one is kind of interesting, where Water Smart Drought Response Program, which this project actually fits really, really well. Not only does it fit really well, the, the application process, if you look at the scoring criteria, it's very consistent with where this project is. And since there's already other grant money, there's already the city's smart idea of collecting money from Tracy and putting money in the bank, this would identify last dollars instead of first dollars for a grant, which is incredibly attractive for folks who are giving out grants. So while we can't make any promises, we said that the probability of getting something like this is probably 40%. It's less than 50/50, but it's hard to tell exactly what that number might be.
Is this federal?
This is federal. Yep.
And we're actively going for these monies, correct?
Say again?
We're actively going to hit this application deadline?
That's, that's what we're talking about here is that, that, the, one of the risks here is that the deadline is due the first week in October and our grant team is ready to go and move forward on it if that's what is decided to do. This, like we said, it leverages local funds, pays last dollar. And what's even better about this is that there's a $10 million cap on it, which covers your entire gap. And you wouldn't be asking for $10 million, you'd be asking for something less, right? So if you do that, the math is easy.
A quick question. Do you know when we would expect to hear hypothetically back on that? Say we put it in the application, when would you hear back?
Three to six months generally. Maybe six months. Great question. So the math, like I said, is very easy. We're right back to where we started. There's no increase to the rate payers, takes advantage of all the things that are going on positively. There is one other Water Smart program is for project design grants. It's the third round. While this also fits very well, we gave it a lower probability because the timing is a little bit strange. It would naturally occur in the spring of 2025. However, there is no specific date of it opening or closing at this time. We're expecting it will come out in the, in the spring like it always does, but we can't make any guarantees. It has a funding maximum of $300,000. So assuming that you're able to get the $300,000 for this, this is what the math is, you're closing a gap of $3.4 million, changes the average bill to $281 and change for a 12.5% increase.
Are there rules that could we apply for both Water Smart grants?
Absolutely. Yes. We did not do a model of that because if you get the, the previous grant we just talked about, you don't need anymore, but. Absolutely. Yes. We did not do a model of that because if you get the, the previous grant we just talked about, you don't need anymore. But we, in my, in my opinion, I think it's wise to apply for as many of those that make sense as you can. So with that, this is just a simple comparison, left to right, highest probability to lowest probability. Right? And so all it does is recap what we just talked about, a $284 a month bill with an increase of 13.6% or no increase, or an increase of 12.5%.
But that's at a 10-year payback.
That's a 10-year payback.
If we decided to extend this out over 20 years, those would obviously drop.
Yes, it would be cut in half, or would be adjusted however many years you wanted to go. Okay? With that.
Bradley?
For discussion.
Oh, Bradley, the, the interest that we're talking about, spreading that out over, you know, 20 years, could we anticipate the interest on that to double or triple? Could you, could you run some type of number that would explain what our interest would look like at 20 years?
So if you look at each one of these calculations, I'll just bring up one of the last ones, the interest that's calculated here is for the full 20-year term of the loan.
Very good.
So all we did was take the total cost to the ratepayer and divided it by the 10 years. What you guys are asking to do is divide it over 20 years. So the, the actual total cost of the ratepayer does not change, you're just spreading that over time. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, it does.
For sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Bradley?
Yes, sir.
I know on previous meetings, we didn't necessarily see eye to eye, and I was challenging you on a lot of things.
For sure.
But I really want to commend you and commend staff because now this is putting, putting, I don't, it's where the rubber meets the road. And I feel like now we, as a council, can have a very, very honest discussion about where we're at. So I appreciate everything that you did on this presentation because now it's very real to me and thank you for the time.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Bradley here?
I appreciate, I definitely appreciate you bringing this to us so we can actually see it in real terms. So I would kind of piggyback that same comment.
Lots to chew on there. Let's go ahead and open it up to public comment or questions there if we can. Anybody would like to come to the podium?
Yeah, I don't even know where to begin. None of you have been around except for Justin here, when the last water rate was increased. That water increase was highlighted for the well, with the very tail end being towards money for the drinking water. Isn't that right, Justin?
I wasn't, I didn't hear the beginning of where you first, I was speaking.
The last water rate increase, primarily the, all the increases for those five years were going to well 1A with the consideration for the drinking water. Nothing has been put towards that without an additional water rate study and more increases. So, you know, you weren't around for that, so you didn't know that. Secondly, serviceability of wells, we popped that back in. Again, I'm going back to my favorite guy up there, Mr. Collins. Over the last several years, with the rate increases, we refurbished the equipment at the three existing wells, 3A, 10, and 9.
We have done some work on those wells.
We've done a lot of work because Blackwater came out when this 1A was first being presented and said the average lifespan of a, of a well was 26 years. And they were all right there at that point. To refurbish all of them, I think was $750,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, they were all done. So my question about serviceable life of existing system, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the casing? Because we didn't touch the casing, we just touched the valving, the generators, the motors, things of that nature there. So I questioned that right up front. I was disappointed in your answer, why, why'd we even look into fresh water from SISHAID? The whole point of this was a council's decision to be part of the cities in the group that would have access to fresh drinking water. And so we paid the 1.4 million back in 2006 to join, knowing that we didn't have the money to bring it into Escalon. And we would take those proceeds from Tracy to pay back that initial 1.4 million.
Which has been done.
That answered your, your question. After that, those monies have accumulated to where they are now to go towards that It doesn't really make much difference what I think, but I lobbied against well 1A. I, I wanted to take that money because we have plenty of water through our three existing wells and tie in right away, five or five years ago. The amount of water that we're able to pull, and that supplies the entire city without any wells, but why would you do that? You want to keep those wells going. So if you have three functional wells, which you can service, then you, you don't need to take out as much water from the drinking water, we can blend it, sell the difference to Tracy, to help pay off some of that, that loans that we're going to end up with. So I was just a little confused with the presentation here. There's a lot, lot that went into that. So, you know, serviceability, those wells aren't going away. If he comes, or someone comes to us and says, "Well, in 50 years, we got to redo the casings, and we got to re-drill," that's different. The refurbishing wells usually is up at the top unless something goes wrong with those casings. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Or online at this point? We'll go ahead and close public comment on item number eight. There was no action item on this, correct? This was just an informative presentation? All right.
But I think it's important that our, our friends at Ardua really go, start looking at the two grant opportunities, especially chasing the one with the October deadline. Typically, I've been, actually, can I ask Bradley another question?
Please.
So at what point, or what's the review time to apply, if we were to apply for that IB grant or the loan? I mean, what's the typical turnaround, like two months, three months, a year?
Three to six months as well.
Okay.
So we have time to wait to see if we come back with the other opportunities to come in first before we apply for a loan. Should we choose to go that way?
That's what I'm thinking, is that we apply for the two grants, we see how that is going, and then if there's a delta, then we look at applying for a loan.
If we were to spitballing here, we don't require a rate study or an increase of rates this next year. We can postpone that and not increase rates for a year next year. We don't have to do it immediately until we get answers from these, is that correct, with our funding source right now?
That's correct.
We don't have to immediately jump in and do something the next six months to decide if we need to do rate increases? We can wait until we get this other stuff.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
For the record, I would just like to point out, and we're all dealing with it, everybody's favorite friend, inflation. And so while we're looking at these numbers, inflation is very real, especially on construction projects. So the sooner that we move on this, the, the sooner we'll be able to curtail any impacts towards inflation.
This project's more than doubled since the first time I heard about it.
It's Ardua's fault. Just kidding, Bradley.
That's on the record, right?
No, I, it's a.
Thank you.
Can I just make a?
Please.
Sorry.
You're good.
Oh, no, I'm excited about the drought response program, and it is due in October. So I would just comment that maybe we should go full steam on that to get that knocked out, especially if the project design grants aren't, we don't even know if they'll come out in spring. So that.
Yeah, I'd agree on.
Drought Response Program grant, that might be the best, best, you know, put our energy through that, for that, what, for two months? If we can get that knocked out and then see where we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Is that enough direction for staff? Our thoughts here? Okay?
Thank you, Bradley.
Were there any other staff communications or updates from you folks here, also on the dais for us tonight?
Yeah. Oh, well, we will start here, you don't have to pass it on to your, your partner there.
We had the list of demands, and that was already decided upon. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we currently have opening for a full-time police officer. So if anybody knows, anyone interested, tell them to apply. They can get an application through the City of Escalon website. And then on August 2nd, we did a healthy room project here in Escalon. It was a great success, and I want to extend my thanks to Modesto Police Detective Sean Dodge and Sean Stroman for bringing the program to Escalon. I also want to thank all, everyone who participated, department members who helped out, were Sergeant Jose Zambrana, Officer Ben Harrison, Officer Sean Jamals, Officer Abraham Palomino, Officer Nick Gek, Officer Frank La Sage, Police Services Manager Sarah Cardoso, and CSO Myella Sales. We also had non-police department members Scott McClellan and Mark Kurunchik as well. I just wanted to thank everybody who participated. It was a success and we're very grateful.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Finance Director?
Sure.
When can we expect the first quarterly budget report?
September. That would be the beginning of our first quarter. We will have a report on our next meeting, just for the month of July, our first, we'll have monthly, but it'll have to be the second meeting.
Ask a question for Finance Director also. Do you have any updates on where we're at with our changes in investment and that kind of stuff, strategy? And whether or not we've got any kind of hedge protection yet for, or if there is some potential option out there? I'm not quite sure, but, because obviously the market's kind of tanking right now. I just want to look at, you know, where are we at for the potential for unfunded liability issues? Do we have any kind of safety net?
Let's unpack two things there. First off, with the investments, we reached out to the local bank, the local bank that we're used to dealing with, and we have received a rate increase on parts of the money, and we have a different investment strategy for the money that was currently with Chandler that was losing so much money. So that has just started, that's in its infancy right now. And I do expect that to yield some much better results. We'll have to wait.
And good work.
Hopefully with our first quarter, we'll have something exciting to share. With the end funded liability, I do have a payoff plan for 10 years that I will present when it's repurposed. Mr. Funch and I will be working on that. We've taken some steps already in the month of July. I was able to take advantage of an opportunity to save $20,000, so we did that for the year just by paying things a different way. So that saved a small amount, but you know, it's still something.
Every little bit counts.
The payoff for 10 years would conceivably save us several million dollars over the life of the payoff.
Awesome. Thank you.
I was thinking.
Really, our first priority, especially stemming from the last couple of budgets, was to see if we weren't losing money anymore, if we could balance our budget. Once we've been able to balance our budget, recently adopted, we're now starting to look at various investments and, you know, kind of hedging against our liability. And, and just to echo, kind of worth repeating, I think, we do have a sum of money that the city has at all times that has been in various investments. We did present that. One is doing okay, and one was actually losing money over time. So we have simply moved the money from the fund that was losing into a more locally-controlled bank, Oak Valley Bank. And they have indicated that, you know, they can produce a better yield than we were getting before. So we will see over time how that performs, but we hope to be doing, making our money work harder for itself, basically. So we will, in, you know, next couple of months, September, October, bring forward an idea on, you know, kind of how to help pay down some of our purse liability and really address that issue.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a few updates on some of the projects going on currently in town. Start with our Phase 2 projects, the line that was coming in. We are, I can confidently say about 99% complete with that. We hope to do a final walkthrough and sign off on that this week, and then that, that project will be completed. The pedestrian crosswalk on Escalon Avenue, we are approximately 50% complete on that. We've got the infrastructure done on the sidewalk sides, the sidewalks and 88 ramps poured, and now they will start making their way towards the middle of the street and getting that infrastructure in, open by end of month, that project's completed as well. Our Plaza 120 sidewalk replacement, replacement, excuse me, is about 75% complete. The sidewalk has been removed and repaired, and the asphalt driveway adjacent to it has been re-poured as well. They have a little bit of landscaping and some grading to do. So we hope here in the next few weeks, that project will wrap up as well, going very smooth. Our Carrigan Lift Station down here on First Street, we are around 50% completed. Most of the infrastructure under the roadway has been completed. There are a little bit left to be done. We are very mindful and met with the contractor school starting this week. So the road, the eastbound traffic, we will have one lane open for sure, no later than Wednesday evening. And I know Chief Hisstaff and myself, we'll be in the area helping with traffic and, because first day of school, that first week. But we will, and that lane will stay open for the duration of the project. So we will be done with a complete road closure here in the next few days on First Street. We appreciate everybody's patience. And we will continue, though, to look for traffic. We've heard of speeders in the area, especially cutting through some of the areas, but we'll continue to keep an eye on that as well. Some of the projects, it'll get started here real soon, is our pavement project and crack seal and a micro seal and our strip on California Mitchell. That is planned to start on the 26th, and that should be a seven to eight-day project. So within a week's time, they should be able to get in and get that taken care of. And again, that firm will be mindful of school traffic and work traffic, making sure we're able to get where they need to before and after schools. Our St. Clair water line replacement, still waiting on a few of the submittals, but we've got just about everything we need, and we hope that gets started here pretty soon. And along with our Valdopena water line, the contractor's having some issues with securing some parts, but we're getting a lot closer, so we hope that starts here towards the end of the month as well. So as far as, well, it works, that is all. One more announcement is we, the folks out in Swanson area, we haven't forgotten about the trees, we just, it's just every time we go to get to it, there's another emergency that pops up. So it's still on our list, we're trying to get there, so I apologize for the length it has taken. And tomorrow night, National Night Out here in Escalon. So we hope everybody can be out and about, at least waving at all the personnel going by. I believe that starts around 6 o'clock tomorrow, and we have nine stops this year that we're stopping at. So we'll be meeting here at the police department. I'm hungry because the people out in Escalon definitely take care of us food-wise, so. That's it for public work.
Quick, quick question, if I can, for City Manager. Did you get everything cleared up with Heritage Church, as far as their question or concern?
Yeah, there was concern that maybe a left hand, a left turn would be eliminated because of the project. We do not think that is the case, but we will triple-check tomorrow. So we, we are, we're getting that cleared up. We have spoken with them, and we are clarifying.
Thank you.
Justin, is the pedestrian crossing on Escalon Avenue, when's the completion date for that?
The completion day is hopefully going to be at the end of this month.
Is that prior to the first football game?
It'll be kind of close.
Okay.
We're pushing as hard as we can to get it, and they're actually doing pretty good. We hope it does, but it's going to be kind of close.
If it can't be done, I think we definitely need to make it, some sort of accommodation for.
Yeah, definitely, for sure. We definitely have the sidewalks, 88 ramps in, so we definitely have a place to cross. We just may have to do hopefully no more than a game or two of assistance again, like we have in the past.
Chief, I don't know, to that point, I don't know who thought of this previously, but during graduation, the officers on duty came up with a very unique way to try to stop traffic. They turned opposite of each other and allowed the public to walk through, so whoever did that was, I think, I mean, if we have to make this accommodation, cars definitely stop when they have a police cruiser going perpendicular to the path of travel, so.
Any other updates?
Yeah, a couple of updates from me. We also, in addition to the police officer position, we have a recreation assistant position open. This is a position that we utilize primarily on game days for the recreation sports out there. So we have a staff member available in case of emergency, answer any questions, just generally be out there. I perhaps noted last time, our soccer days will now go about 12 hours because of the number of kids. We have almost 900 kids playing soccer this season, and so that day is. And so that day is stretched. We have one staff member who covers some of the time out there, but we will need another staff member to cover the time. So that staff member doesn't work 12-hour days. So we do have that position open, hoping to fill that very quickly. So if anyone is interested, please submit a resume in the next couple of days here. I just want to say, do appreciate the, you know, the thoughts on the staff report and its clarity for the public. Our, our goal with all these staff reports is to make it clear to the public what is happening. So any input that is received is appreciated. And then the last item, so we did provide a presentation on the surface water project. We also have another large project, the wastewater treatment plant. You will all know, we have been sort of furiously working on a design. That design was totaling $40 million. That was a tough pill to swallow for, for this council and the community, of course. And, you know, staff was doing everything we could to get that down. Really what precipitated that design is a cease and desist order and a notice of violation that we received from the state, or some concerns they have with the operation of our very old planet at this point. I can now say that, you know, through Justin's good work and the team and our consultant, Tom, we have sort of passed the first hurdle, the first gateway. We have received a clean notice, a clean report from Compliance Section of the state. That does not mean everything is resolved and there's no further concerns. It means that the issues that were continuing to be present in the cease and desist and notice of violation are largely resolved and they want us to continue to do work. But now that those are largely resolved, we can turn our attention, you know, perhaps from the $40 million design to something lesser. So the second gateway that we will, you know, be aiming towards is our discussions with permitting. So permitting is a state agency, you know, in the same department, or group in the same department, that really looks at, you know, the operation permits that a city holds to operate a wastewater treatment plant. And so we are establishing a game plan to, you know, to see what we can do with the design and improvements at that plant that aren't the full $40 million design. No promises, any stretch of the imagination here, you know, how successful we'd be towards that. But we've, we've made a good first step with, you know, compliance. So that's why we don't have a presentation here. We've sort of pivoted to a new path. We will get down that path just a little ways and then we will bring a presentation forward to this council.
Thank you. Okay, with that, next up, we have matters presented from the audience. The public may address the City Council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the City Council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. And except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And now that we've said all that fun stuff, we open up to the public if you'd like to come to the podium and speak on any other topic not on the agenda tonight.
My name's Betty Bennett, and I don't know if you guys are aware that we had a fire behind my house. This is the Murphy property. That is a piece of garbage that steps down, it comes up and it steps down and they irrigate. And as you go further down toward their house, it flattens out and the weeds are terrible. And so I think the neighbor had a gardener or maybe it flared and by the time they got there, it was one house from my house on the back. If you go further down, it goes in like 12 feet to their building and around that house. And it's like five feet at the second entry coming right off of Brendan. So I don't know if they've been notified that they need to do a fire break along our fence line or what, or how we go about addressing that, our houses don't burn down. And also the lot on Irwin and California, the weeds are about three feet tall in that lot. So since we're seeing fires all over, and I can tell you, we had one. So we're just fortunate that the neighbor was home and called and the fire department got out there right away. But that lot is terrible behind us.
Yeah, any lot that you see, I know there's multiple ways to alert the city staff on that regard. I think we can take this as a public notice, we have a problem there. Take a look at, because I know the Irwin problem's been called in multiple times.
And look, you'll see the weeds are terrible on that property. Thank you.
Sean Dodge, Modesto Police. I just want to echo what Chief Hardgrave said. Just thank you for the opportunity to do the Healthy Room project with you guys. City Manager French, Sean Solzman, we couldn't do it without you guys. Basically, the Healthy Room project was started in Watts, California with a friend of mine who had actually started going into apartments with his wife and his daughter to teach her a valuable lesson. Basically providing a bed, a desk, and a dresser for these kids that were in need. He was in law enforcement, his wife was in the FBI. He approached me two years ago with this idea with only about six done. Since we've approached, or since we've begun this, this mission, we've done 130 children locally in the Central Valley and over 160 throughout the, throughout the United States. Boston Police Department, Fort Worth, Texas, Detroit, Michigan have all bought into the program because of the example that is set here. We couldn't do it without the community. Basically, what it is, is law enforcement goes in, we always see those kids that are maybe sharing a bed with a sibling, a parent, or maybe even sleeping on the floor. We, as a nonprofit, go into that house and reestablish that. It's our way into the house and a way to build a relationship with a kid and a family and hopefully deter future problems with that family and hopefully give them a sense of community. So again, I thank you guys. This one was on us. Healthy Room project paid for the entire thing. Usually a family or a child will cost us $1,000, $1,500. I'm hoping that we can explore asset forfeiture funds, use that drug money, and let's go ahead and give it back to our kids. So again, thank you very much. That money that is raised through Escalon from asset forfeitures or private donations will be earmarked specifically for those kids in need. If you get that opportunity to see the video of the girl that was impacted, it's, it's heartwarming. It really is. So I encourage you guys to do that. I don't know if I can share that, but I have it back here and explore that later if we need to. Thank you.
Just one second. Hold on.
Like to.
We're going to show them.
Are we going to play something?
We're going to play that video. Hold on, just one second.
So we're out here doing the Healthy Room project for Catalina. She was identified by the school as being possibly in need of needing some renovations to her room and create a better study environment. So we came out and we met her and we found that she was the perfect recipient for this. And so we're just trying to give back to our community and help the citizens of Escalon. We identified Carolina by going around to the school, talking to different staff that worked there, the administrators, the teachers, seeing if they knew a student who was in need and who qualified for the Healthy Room project at their house. So Escalon's such a tiny town, we run into the students all the time. So I ran into Carolina at El Portel and now she's going to be a freshman at the high school.
Me and my mom, we've been alone for like a year already. My brother passed away two years ago and my dad passed away a year ago. I know my mom works a lot for the stuff I have, so I'm really appreciative of all that. And I think my dad is, is looking over me, taking care of me and everything.
Oh my goodness!
Thank you for the share for the video. Appreciate that a lot. Definitely drove that home for us. Mr. Danzinger, you said you would like to come to the podium?
That was great. Thanks for sharing. Just a couple of things. You said the state has removed the cease and desist order?
Not, not removed. We are, are making significant progress for it. We, we've had a kind of a clean year. There's still a few little things that we need to clean up, you know, in terms of improvements, but we're making, we're making good progress.
I ask because if that document is in your possession, that's gold and, you know, you should present it. Two, with the permitting going on, I brought this up before, talking to Justin about this. The reason for the cease and desist order, by and large, was the industrial dischargers. I don't understand why we have, if we get this letter, it takes us off that hook, why we're not insisting through our permit process, making them create their own industrial treatment plant so that they don't discharge anything but clean water to us. I don't see the need for taxpayers to foot that bill. And, and I've spoken to Justin about this because it's been brought up before. If the technology isn't such that they don't, that they have no room to install it on their, their physical properties, then we should allow them to lease property at our treatment plant and let them build it. Again, there's no need for us as taxpayers to fund people that contribute no tax revenue to the city. I just don't understand that at all. I'd like to address the tax increase that was voted on 5-0 by council. And maybe I should go to Frank here because I'm not quite sure. I had offered that all individual council members should come out in a positive way, since you voted for it, and to communicate that to the community so that they understand. It was a nice blurb in the paper, you know, having that produced by each individual council member, I think would be a beneficial thing to, you know, through the different medias. I don't know that that, is that allowable?
All right, you finish what you're thinking. It depends. I'm not trying to be, I think that the general rule is, you know, council members can do things on their own private time and on their private dime, so to speak. You can't use any taxpayer assistance in supporting or opposing any tax measure. So they can knock on doors and other types of things in their own personal capacity, private capacity. The council obviously can't do anything at these type of meetings.
And with that, I would suggest then, individually on your own, as citizens of Escalon that happen to be on the council, that you come out, say your blurb, how, why you're for it, what's it going to do for the city? Maybe rotate through into the paper, Escalon residents, maybe the city website. I think it's a good idea. The city needs it. And since you voted for it, I think we need to be more vocal about it than we were last time. So that would be my suggestion to the council. Also, yard signs, you know, whatever that is. I don't know if we can give donations to the city to put up yard signs for this proposition, whatever it's going to be, so that we can, you know, get a positive voice out there into the community. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Couple things. For the accounts payable, is there a way that we could get more information on line items that are not very specific or they're questionable as to why we're paying for something like fitness membership? I don't know if that's part of, I'm genuinely asking if that's part of somebody's, you know, pay, that they get a fitness membership. But I was looking over, just some things are quite questionable.
That is part of the benefits package that's outlined in the MOUs that we have for each type of employee. So it's not the entire amount, but it is a portion. So a police officer might receive a amount that the city pays for their fitness program as a way to encourage them to use a local...
Understood. Is there a way that we can get further information on other things that seem to be questionable?
We can. And if you have an example, I could certainly look at it.
I have a lot that's posted in tonight's packet.
45 characters. So we have to figure out what we can...
Well, that's what I'm asking. Or is the public allowed to set a meeting with you to go through some of these items that are questionable?
Is that something that we can do, Frank?
Yeah, it's, it's something that can happen. It just has to be scheduled. There's no law to prohibit, it's just figuring out schedules and that sort of thing.
That would be great. Also, I'm wondering if we are accounting for the change of businesses here? It seems like we are losing businesses. I don't know what's happening with Rite Aid. Their shelves are empty. They swear they're not closing, but that $900,000 you were talking about, Sean, is that contingent upon our new businesses coming in? Is the city trying to encourage businesses to come in? What are we doing? We're not, we feel like we're, as a community, I feel like we're drowning here with what we have. I don't want to go to another city to have to shop, but I have to because I can't get my needs met here. And in addition to that, I'd like to know with the sales tax increase, if this does pass, is there a designated amount that goes specifically to law enforcement? Or is it just on a basis of need?
No specifics on that. It's a general fund tax measure.
So how can us, as, you know, members of this community, how can we support this not knowing what the division of it is going to be? It's all going to go to the city. Are we paying just for gym memberships? I don't, I'm genuinely asking. If you're putting in your statement that this is going to support law enforcement, then I think as a community, we have a right to know what percentage of that money is, is going to go to...
We're not allowed according to law, based on how it's set up, to specifically say X amount or percentage of this money will go here, here, and here. There's not, that's, this is a general vote that gets 50 plus one, I believe.
Yeah, as a general tax measure, it is not, it can't be specifically restricted in that way. It requires a special tax measure, two-thirds vote. As a general tax measure, 50 plus one, the city does, city council will retain their discretion on a yearly basis. I would say the best way for certain percentages and priorities we made is part, should be part of the budget process and the community and the citizens. I mean, that's the planning document and they'll be able to earmark for this year, this is our plan, expenditure plan of Measure P. It's Measure P now.
Separate funding on the line items. You'll see a separate line item on the budget for that revenue specifically.
But we won't see that until the following fiscal year, correct?
You'll see it if it passes in November, the tax measure, if we, the tax measure should, we should start collecting revenues beginning April 1, the last, the last quarter.
So it'll just be April then to June, essentially?
Yes.
In that fiscal year, that we won't see that, but then you're saying it will be budgeted for?
It'll have to be budgeted because it's going to be revenue. I mean, the Finance Director spoke this too. What I would say is, if it passes in November, we'll know in November, whenever the election results are certified. And then the council, as part of the mid-year, I'd imagine, then they would start already allocating that last, because there's going to be a quarterly adjustment, because they're going to get the tax revenue in April, so the mid-year will factor that in. And so there will be a conversation probably in January, February about dealing with that money for this upcoming, this fiscal year currently.
Ultimately, you have to state how much of that is going to go towards the officer's budget, correct?
Yeah, no, I'm saying...
You can't say states. I just want to make sure I understand. So you can't state what percentage of that 1% would go specifically to police officers?
You you can do that on a yearly basis. I'm just saying you can't do it right now because it's a general fund measure. So the council has to have the discretion under the law to be able to change it on year, year, year to basis, or a month to month basis. They want to do budget amendments and so forth. I'm just saying it's a living, changing allocation that they'll change like any other general fund revenues every year. It just can't be set in stone right now.
Okay, but they will have discretion once approved.
Absolutely. And they could allocate whatever percentage the council decides at that point.
Got it. And then last, I just wanted to thank the chamber of conference. I actually got to speak to Jessica Wiley, and I don't, I didn't personally realize how much that they do on a volunteer basis. And Park Heat was awesome. I'd like to see more of our community out there. But I think we all had a good time, and I think they're doing a great job with the events that they do put on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to address the concerns about Rite Aid.
Quick, yeah.
Real quick. So for Ms. Vargas and the general public, Rite Aid as a corporation is going through bankruptcy. Previously, Rite Aid used to receive deliveries multiple times a week. Now they get two deliveries a month. And so the creditors, because they're in the middle of bankruptcy proceedings, creditors aren't giving them the amount of supplies they need on a consistent basis. And this is an issue with Rite Aid corporate across the United States. Every Rite Aid has this problem. Hopefully, when they come out of bankruptcy proceedings, they'll get back into the normal delivery flows, but that's why the stores seem bare.
Any other matters presented from the audience?
Thank you. Thank you very much, chief, for the involvement in the program. We saw the YouTube. Many of you here in town or right here in in the council chambers knew about or was at 104th birthday of Jettie Harrow. So she is a Centurion citizen, senior citizen. Unfortunately, about a week ago, she fell and broke her hip and was in the hospital. They did surgery. She's out in rehab. So I bring that to you and to the community. She is a Centurion, 104. And so if you can just keep her in your thoughts and prayers or think about jotting her a line here and there, I think she's at English Oats for the time being in Modesto. So if you feel compelled to do that, just get in touch with me, and I can give you some more information. But for those of you that know her and have met her, I can tell you that as of today, a visit, not me personally, but the visitors, she was sitting up, ready to go, going through her therapy and waiting to get out of there to go home. But anyway, I just wanted to pass that on to the, to the council and the citizens. And she attends the fun bunch and the senior lunch program when she can. So I think she just needs the citizen's support at 104. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else? With that, we'll close. Matters presented from the audience. Move on to administrative matters. Item nine, American Red Cross Use Agreement Contract: Discussion and Direction.
Thank you, Mayor. Looks like we have a contingent coming up. We'll give a brief presentation. This was an item that was requested to be brought back for council's consideration by council members. You will recall, well, first, in 2018, we do have, we signed, and we have an existing agreement with the Red Cross for potential use of the community center in case of emergency for emergency relief services. In early 2024, the American Red Cross reached out to the police chief to see if they could amend that contract with the city, that agreement with the city, to add parking and potential storage. At that time, during that discussion, there were a number of questions about the potential use and what was allowed and not allowed under these agreements. At that time, that agreement did not move forward, that amended agreement did not move forward. And subsequently, the council has wanted to sort of reconsider the underlying or the existing agreement. So this item is the execution of that request. So you will see here, we do have the Red Cross in attendance, primarily to answer questions. I don't know if there's a presentation necessarily, but primarily to answer any questions. I think the council really is going to discuss and consider the underlying agreement.
Mr. French, for, I know I should have cut you off at the beginning, but for full disclosure, I would like the public to know that I previously served as an American Red Cross volunteer.
I just have one simple, one simple thing. Will the Red Cross allow our lawyer to write into the contract things that will allow us to protect ourselves from any abuse or misuse of the contract?
Good evening. My name is John Reeves. I'm the Regional Disaster Officer for the American Red Cross Bay Northern California Coastal Region. And thank you, council member, for being a Red Crosser before. Sorry, Mr. Hagan, are you talking about damage to the building, to the facility?
A lot of different general statements are in that that don't, in my opinion, specifically protect our city from the potential of, I don't know how else to say it, but abuse of the, the potential for long-term, you know, obviously, you see what's going on in our country. What's to keep you guys from using that and then contracting with an NGO? And then now our city can't use its community center for what its intention is?
Okay, I understand your question.
So so my very simple question is, will American Red Cross allow our lawyer to build in guardrails to protect our town in their contract?
Sure. So just to be clear, it is an agreement. We don't consider it a contract. And generally, the way we approach this with communities across the country is to use that agreement as an initial discussion or revisiting of a previous discussion to look at contact information and any changes to the facility, especially around ADA or any other rooms that may be available. And that discussion is really just to prepare, to make sure we have an understanding of where we may be able to open up shelters in the event of a disaster. If something were, unfortunately, it happened in Escalon, and we wanted to use that facility, we'd be in coordination with the facility owner, and they would have to grant us permission to use it. And that would be decided at the time of, and we would sign another agreement, even if one was signed previously specifically for that use. And then we'd be able to outline the terms and the time of that. And usually, we use those facilities specifically for disaster response, mostly for shelters. And the shelters are open as long as people are displaced or until we could put them into another more longer term housing solution. We say whenever we open a shelter, we look to close it because it's not necessarily the best place for people to be after disaster. So we generally do not at all maintain long-term sheltering. With that said, the agreement can be viewed, and if there are comments or changes from your legal counsel, we would take it back to our general counsel. And as long as we can get it approved, we would be able to sign in.
As, I understand the the positive side of it, obviously. I mean, no one's against helping other people, but we also have to make sure that our community's not taken advantage of in a very negative way. Obviously, you can see how it's been done, not necessarily by your group, but by others around the country. And so my simple request, at least from my standpoint, is, I can't speak for everyone else, is that guardrails have to be put into this agreement so that we don't get sold down the river, so to speak.
Sure, I understand. So again, I would say if, if and when, hopefully it doesn't, a disaster happens and we need to shelter within the city of Escalon, we would come to the property manager for that facility and ask for permission to use it for that disaster. Generally, our shelters are open for a few hours through a few days. We generally do not open shelters longer term. In the case of really large disasters like the campfire or in Lahaina, what we saw in Hawaii, those shelters were open only as long as we needed to, and then we move people into either hotels or some other situation to better serve them. We do not maintain facilities beyond what's needed. And as a facility owner, we have in the past, unfortunately, been asked to vacate a facility because they needed it for school or for graduation or for a basketball game. And we'll, it's, it's that owner's facility. We will, you know, adhere to that. We just asked that we have 48 hours to post that shelter and work on alternate site. If we need to continue to host a congregant shelter, we'll move it somewhere else. But absolutely, if the facility owner does not want us to be in that facility, we will vacate.
I appreciate your answering questions.
So in that, you said, I just want to clarify. If we were to sign this agreement, something happens, whatever it was, doesn't matter. You still have to come to us and get permission. We have the right at that point in time to tell you no.
Correct.
Is that the way our contract reads?
Yeah, so it's.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, I mean.
With our city attorney, I mean, we still have the right of refusal at any point in time ever.
It says upon request and if feasible, so.
Is this the new contract or the old? I only have the old contract in front of us.
I think both 18 and the new one have similar language to that effect.
So we do have the right to just write of refusal at any given moment? Because I thought we discussed that that wasn't necessarily the case.
Yeah, I thought there was a 30-day period that they could drag their feet on, was my understanding in the last conversation.
Is both.
If I could clarify, we don't have signed facility use agreements with every shelter across the country. A lot of times, it's, again, it's somewhat pro forma for us to work through that so that we know who the contacts are, what facilities we could use, what's the ADA accessibility, what are the, what are the benefits and the detriment? So does it have showers, does it have bathrooms, all the things that we know we need for shelters and other emergency use? If and when a disaster happens, we will contact that facility owner. If we don't have a pre-existing facility use agreement, it doesn't matter. At that time, if they allow us to use it, we'll do a walkthrough, we'll identify any pre-existing damage to, to make sure that we're clear on any damage we've caused to that facility, and we have done that. And we will sign a new facility use agreement at that time for that use, regardless of whether or not we had a pre-existing. And again, at that time, Mr. Mayor, if the property manager, the facility owner chooses not to let us use it, that's fine. Just, I would say in general, we open those shelters at the request of the fire or police or the city, based on a disaster within that city. We may, in some cases, open a shelter in Escalon for people evacuating in nearby community. But again, it would be, we generally work to the local government to make sure you're okay with that and that we work with you in order to identify a location and to get permission to use that location. If one cannot be found, we'll look to churches. If we can't find a church, we'll have to relocate a shelter further away from the disaster area. So this is all, we don't own these facilities, and it's not a binding agreement. It's just a way for us to identify potential locations to facilitate the quicker opening of a shelter. But again, if at that time, it's not available because the school, it's being used for something else, which we happen to run into a lot, then we can't use it.
I think you're trying to be genuine, I do. But I also think that I don't believe any agreement is, you know, they're not going to be used against us potentially. Not you, but higher-ups potentially could use that. I mean, if we're signing an agreement, and you're, there's the situation where that could be pushed up against us with a 30-day, you know, period of drag out, even if we don't want it there. And my, my concern is not helping people that are in our community or the communities around us. My concern is a lot of the, the major problems happening around our country that are, could very easily be dropped on our lap because of something that is decided by a boss above you. So I, as much as I appreciate what you're telling me, I personally think, and I can't speak for everyone else, but that the language in the agreement needs to be hardened up. That's just my opinion.
So, Mr. Mayor, pro tem. I think what John is saying is, in the event, so let's say the council as a whole decided to sign this agreement. If there is a natural disaster, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if there is a natural disaster and there is a pre-existing agreement for the use of the community center, the very first thing that is going to happen is someone from the Red Cross is going to contact City Hall and say, we have had this natural disaster. I don't want to mention anything because I don't want to jinx us, but we've had this disaster. Can we use the community center? We have the first right of refusal to say, absolutely not. We have whatever event it is, and then they go find someplace else. So but even by signing this agreement, doesn't necess, we always have the first right of refusal.
Yeah, and I, and, and that's the nice version of it.
But from what I understand, is if we don't have an agreement on the books, we still can sign that agreement right then and there. I mean, even if we don't sign this right now, it still will be available when that comes to, if there happens to be a disaster, we are, we can still be in communication. You can still use it as a shelter. We would just sign it at that point in time, correct?
Our existing contract from 18 is valid until we change something, correct? So never sunset it.
Or we give 30 days notice.
Or we give 30 days notice to disengage from the agreed agreement.
Right.
So we're currently in your Rolodex.
We are, yes.
At this point.
In general, we like to do.
I guess what's the downside to not having the agreement? I guess that's the argument I need to hear. If we don't have the agreement, what is, was, was the consequence of that? If we're already in your Rolodex for a disaster?
It may take us longer to figure out who to call to open the facility. It may make it more difficult for us to assist the residents of Escalon in, after a natural disaster. We will still open up shelters. We'll work to open up and help the people affected. We'll look at churches, we'll look at whatever other facilities we have. Generally, depends, but usually we work with the police or the fire. If there's an evacuation due to a wildfire, they will identify an evacuation site. We'll go there, and then we'll work with the city emergency manager, county emergency manager to identify a location. If we have a location pre-identified, we'll start there. If not, then we'll ask what else is available. In general, we look for government-owned facilities at community centers because if that county or the city can let us use it. If not, then we'll start looking at churches. And if we don't have anything else on the books, then we'll be asking our local partners, the police or fire, do you have any facilities that we can use? And we'll start cold calling them. The challenge is, these disasters tend to happen at inopportune times, 2:00 in the morning, and we will be there 24/7 in order to give them, those people affected, a place to sleep. And we'll work throughout the night to find a location if we need to. The faster we can, we can do that, the faster we can get people into a safe place to sleep and rest. But in the end, we'll do what we need to do for the community members. And the last thing I would say is, the Red Cross, we, we respond to disasters 24/7 across the country based on the needs of the community. So it's often the city, police, or fire calling us, telling us that there's a disaster, and we're there to help the communities meet their obligation to helping their citizens after disaster. That's our sole mission. However we can do it, the fastest and the best way possible, look to do. We always want to partner with the local community to provide resources that are locally available, and that, that's what we'll continue to do. So if we're unable to either sign a new agreement, we'll continue to use the previous one, and we'll maybe update contact information. Again, the offer is, we don't have to sign a new agreement. We don't have to sign anything. If we can just get updated contact information so we know who to call to ask if we can open up a shelter, that's sufficient. Anything that can facilitate that happening quicker is, is fine for us.
I mean, I feel comfortable with you guys giving us a phone call, says, hey, there's a fire, we need to house some people from some town around us that are, that are, you know, are potentially family and friends. What I don't have, I feel comfortable with is, you know, stuff that is obviously on the radar. So to me, that's, it's, it's a weak argument. I mean, I think that you could literally just call us up, and Jaylen would say, hey, what do you guys feel about this? And we would say, yeah, sounds like the right answer. And it would happen like pretty quick. I don't see why we need to have an agreement. Just don't.
Well, the reason, I, I did a little bit more research in this, and then the 2018 agreement, the 2018 agreement only gives them permission to use the building. The revised agreement includes the building, the use of a storage closet to hold beds, blankets, whatever, in the event of a disaster, and the parking lot. And by doing that, it puts any risk or if there were, say, they were using the. And by doing that, it puts any risk or if there were, say they were using the shelter and somebody backs into a car, that's the agreement that we have with the Red Cross. If we use the existing 2018 agreement and they come in and they use the shelter and there's an accident in the parking lot, guess who's responsible? The city would be responsible. That would, that, so that's the driver to sign the revised.
Which I get. I mean, you know, I, I know I come across as the jerk in this scenario, but reality is, I have to be, in my opinion, looking out for what's best interest of the individuals that live in this town.
So what kind of guardrails would you like?
I personally think that what the mayor brought up is a good point. I don't think we even need an agreement. I think I'd run the 30 days out right now. And I would give them our information and they can call us whenever you have an issue.
Councilman Ingles, what do you?
Councilman Ingles, you had something to add?
I do. I just had a, a question. Recently, there has been an executive order to address homeless encampments and $24 billion has been pledged across multiple agencies. Has the Red Cross or is the Red Cross slated to receive any of that funding?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, in, in addressing that, that scenario of potential homeless shelter, we, we respond to natural disasters unless a facility with pre-existing homeless populations evacuated, then we would support everyone. The Red Cross shelters open to everyone for the duration of that disaster. We don't make exceptions.
Quick, quick question on that. If, so if San Joaquin County were to declare homelessness in emergency, is that something that the Red Cross could be pulled into?
We could support with material if you'd like. We can train people to be shelter managers. We can even assist in training that person to be a shelter manager. That is not our primary mission within the Red Cross. We can support our communities in multiple ways, but we would not run that homeless shelter. It's not our role.
Thank you.
If, again, if there is, I just want to be clear, if there is a disaster and people are evacuated, we help everyone who's evacuated regardless of national affiliation, legal status, if they're homeless or not. We help everyone during the need of that disaster. But we don't specifically help homeless people who are homeless without a disaster occurring, if that makes sense.
So I, and we're addressing what, one of my issues, one of my concerns was, is the vocabulary and some of the definitions. And I know you said that you're dealing with natural disasters. And, and I'm just reading through the old agreement. It does not state natural disasters. It says temporary refuge for disaster victims. And because there's no vocabulary definition for disaster or emergency or shelter, and I really would like to see what those are considered, right? And so we can really, it's just up to who's defining those and what those are. And that, that's a little bit of a concern for me.
Sure. So the way I would define it would be anytime someone's evacuated from their home. So it could be, it could be someone who is doing something illegal in their home and everyone around them has to be evacuated due to hazmat situation. We've done that. We've opened up a shelter for those surrounding community members who need to be evacuated or due to a police action. There's a number of things that aren't quite natural disasters. But in each of those cases, we generally respond to the police department calling us to support those residents who've been displaced. Trying to think if we have any national documents with the definition of disaster. The challenge is.
And I'm not, it's not that I don't trust you as a person or you guys as a personal local organization either. And it would be nice to have those on paper so that we can see those sign that we have seen and you have seen what these definitions are.
I think one way that I would encourage you to look at that would be, is there a need by the city council or the city to house their residents due to something that occurred? That's when you would call us and we would be there to help. So we, if there's something that occurs within the community where you need our help to, to support those residents, we would be there. If it's, again, it, it, there's a lot of different situations that that would entail. Some of them, we can do some, like a homeless situation. We, we do have communities, cities and counties that ask us to take over cooling centers or warming centers in the winter for homeless populations. We're able to support, but we can't run those. And so we'd have a conversation based on what the community is asking us to do. We do not respond on our own. It's always in coordination with our emergency management partners, police, fire, emergency management on the behest of the community, whose role it is to support those residents. So if there's something that happens where someone's evacuated and you need our help, we'll be there regardless of the definition.
And so my concern, I mean, city, fine. And when you say community, there's the larger community. So if the county, for example, needed shelters and they called you and said, well, you have an agreement with Escalon. How's Escalon? Well, are we, you know, we don't, we need that right to respond or right to refusal, right? And so I think that's more of a concern is whether our community, that can be the city, but that could be the county and that could be the state. And I think that's the bigger concern is that the state's going or the county is going to come in and say, this is to be used for our shelter.
Sure.
And again, it's beyond you. Like it's, it, it doesn't have to do with us trusting you as an individual or as, you know, your individual Red Cross.
Generally, due to S E M, State Emergency Management System, that's the California has its locals requesting support from counties. Counties requesting support from the state. So the state does not ask us to open shelters in cities. If they do, if there's a request due to flooding and they're getting ahead of it, which we did see a couple of years ago, contact that, our partners within the city to ask, can we do this and try to work out the politics? Since it's not us really driving that, we, we try to make it work. Our whole mission is to help people affected by disasters and we try to get ourselves out of the politics of it and just help people. But I understand your point.
Right. And I know, and that would be great if it was in writing. And that's what we're saying is like, that would be great if we could have something like that in writing so that we can say, this is what we are agreeing to here.
So Mayor Protam, if they added a section, like honestly, an amendment to this contract that just clearly defines, okay, this is what a disaster is. And if we work through those definitions, are those the kind of guardrails that?
Well, initially I was thinking that kind of stuff and, but Dave brought up a, a, a good point. I'm sorry, Mayor. Dave brought up a good point and is that they already have our contact information. So if there's ever an issue and they really need to use Escalon or we really need to use, have them help us, we could call them and do that right away. I don't see the, the, the contract, the, the agreement, in my opinion, puts us potentially in, in, in a negative spot. If you're dealing with people that are acting like wolves, you know, not you personally, but I'm talking about the potential to, to misuse or, or manipulate legal language.
Well, that's why I was saying that if, if they could give us a list of what the language that you're concerned about and we added that as a list of definitions within this contract, would that give you better peace of mind? Like, for example, the word disaster. What does a disaster mean? And it says, in the event of a natural disaster, Red Cross will be contacted by the fire department, police department, blah, 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 blah. That way it's very clear and we could hold them in violation of the contract if they were outside.
That's a hard contract to generate and create.
Well, I have another question.
I, I would just say, we tried making changes before and we were told they're not going to make them. So, so I mean, I think this is kind of a, an exercise in futility, honestly.
So if I can address that, I'm not sure who that was, but in our policy and guidance, what happens is any, any changes to an existing standard agreement has to go to our general counsel. So if, if the city proposes changes to the standard shelter facility use agreement, we would take that to our office of general counsel and then they would probably initiate conversations with your general counsel to work out some of the details. Generally, it's around the liability. Generally, it's around the insurance question. So we do, we have in the past, we have experienced that where it's back and forth because of some of the legal language. But again, if, if there are changes you want to propose or additions, we're more than happy to take that to our office of general counsel and they will advise at that point if we are, after those discussions, able to sign or not. And if not, it, again, it won't stop us from asking to support the citizens of Escalon in the face of a disaster.
I have a good question. Earlier in the discussion, you mentioned whether, if we had the agreement, even with the agreement in place of a disaster occurred, you're coming with another agreement with you for us to have to sign and agree to at that point in time? So do we even know what that looks like, something like that would look like?
Probably similar to the facility use agreement that we've seen.
It's the same one.
I'm just, I'm just asking, if we're going to get a contract at the time of a disaster, why do we have to sign one now? What, if you have to have that one signed, you have to have our agreement to it anyways. So at that point, on a case-by-case basis, you're going through, you're coming in for disasters, going through legal, you're telling us what's going on with it. We say yea or nay, we sign off on it. If we have to do that every time anyways, why do we need an agreement at all? If you have updated contact info, what's the benefit? So not hearing the benefit at this point, if we're going to have to sign another contract on a case-by-case disaster basis, why do we need one now?
Again, it's, it's for readiness. We don't. So I, I can just say, we, if we walked out of here and you choose not to sign a new agreement, it, what, what we would like from the discussion around the agreement is a review of the facility. Facilities change over time. Since 2018 and now, there might be changes to which may affect ADA accessibility or may have benefited or allowed for showers, to, to, to have showers, whatever. All those pieces of information is important for us to determine, based on the population and the people who are evacuated, what facility would best be used. So that would be helpful. We could accomplish that. Michael's team can accomplish that without signing an agreement. That's perfectly fine. I will say that in the event of a disaster, what we generally do, once we get a permission to use the facility, we ask someone to come, we walk through a checklist. So we identify any damage. Any damage to that facility that we've caused, we will pay for. And we have replaced gymnasium floors ad nauseam across the country. I can't tell you how much money we've spent doing that, but we've made that commitment. If, if, if we break a window, furniture gets lost or things happen, we do pay for all of that, 100%. So that's what that agreement, when we open the facility is for. There are times when we have opened a shelter at 2:00 in the morning with just the checklist, didn't have the ability to sign that agreement, we'll go back and sign it. At that point, it gets really complicated if we're going to go back with general counsel back and forth. So the facility use agreement that you have, that's a new one, is the one that we're going to bring if we need to open a shelter at that time. So any, any changes you want to make now, we'd sort of look into that. But 2:00 in the morning, it's pretty difficult for us to work on legalese of those documents. We're just trying to get the doors open to let people in after disaster.
What's typically, what's the response time from when a natural disaster occurs to when a shelter is opened?
We, we'd like to do it within a couple of hours. It depends on a number of factors. Right now, if this, if it happened today, it'd be a little longer of a time because we're sending people to, to, up to the fire, the park fire. We have people flying to Florida. We have a lot of our response capability deploying out. So it does take a little longer, but within a few hours and the quicker we can find a location and find the staff, we can expedite that. But in general, we try to do it within a couple of hours of notification of a shelter being needed.
Yeah, I do appreciate a lot of what you're saying and I know what you're saying is genuine from what you're saying. And I know the American Red Cross does a lot of good. But also, at the end of the day, I have to look, personally, I have to look at these and go, well, how can this be potentially manipulated or used against us? And so my, my feeling is, I would like, unless anyone else has stuff to say, I'd like to make a motion.
Comment?
Oh, sorry.
Public comment, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, public.
Hang on, public. Just hang on. At the council level, we get to open up public comment? Sure. All right. Let's go ahead and open that up for public comment or questions. Come on up to the podium.
Evening. Actually, it's midnight my time. So there's another option and the option is, and I appreciate your counsel. Thank you. The other option, oh, she's a creepers, sorry. All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. There's another option. The option is no agreement at all, not even the current one. Just tear it up, rip it up, okay? This is, I'm sorry, we're a rural community and I appreciate that you were part of American Red Cross and that came through loud and clear, but we're Escalon. And every time something happens in Escalon, Escalon steps up. And if it's a rural and a local disaster, everybody's got everybody's phone number. I think I have most all of yours up here too. So we know how to get ahold of each other. And if we have your number or they have our number, we can take care of that. I too am seeing what's going on out there and I don't want out there here. And I'm just going to say it loud and clear. I don't want what's out there here. We are really good at taking care of our own and I'm going to copy your words out of context. I think this is an argument in futility. So we're really good at taking care of our own. And I would appreciate it if you would think of the option of tearing up the current contract and we'll utilize our community center if we need it. And if we need outside help, we've got their number. And they won't have to go finding ours. They have it. They're here. And we're a small rural town. Okay, good night.
I have to say I'm torn on this because I have family that is dealing with the aftermath of the Lahaina fires in Hawaii and the Red Cross is who has been there for them on the ground. It, I feel like we have a lack of humanity here. Yes, we, we are a community, but we are a very diverse community. And the fact that we wouldn't open our doors to help a neighboring town in need due to a disaster is disgraceful, in my opinion. I think that the council needs to cut the bullshit and be honest and transparent. What is the underlying issue? Because none of you have said it. You don't want homeless here. You don't want it to be a homeless encampment with drugs. Just say it. If we're so close as we are, and this is my mother here. So we're so close as we are, how are we so divided? Why can't we just say what the issue is? Is this going to turn into a homeless encampment? The homeless reform that's happening, are you taking part in that? The, the definitions, I don't think is the issue. I think we all know what defines a disaster or a natural disaster. But you can't limit to natural disaster when you have like the park fire that was not caused by a natural resource. It was caused by arson. So that then is not part of a natural disaster, even though it is destroying all of this town. And, and it may be that you don't have family that lives there. But for those of us that do have family where disaster has struck, we are grateful for these resources. And, and if I were the Red Cross, I would say, well, if, if you're not willing to open your doors to help other communities, why should they come and help us? Because you know, there may be a time when we need them where our resources, resources that we have as a community is not strong enough, where our funding is not great enough to help ourselves as a community, then what are we going to do?
So I think the concern and, because this was brought up on previous city council meetings, that the concern is that, not the Red Cross, but the state of California, the United States federal government declares homelessness, illegal immigration, whatever, a disaster. And that would allow the opportunity for someone to force the Red Cross to bring in unhoused and to bring in people from the border to Escalon.
But you don't mind them kind of eating fruit and vegetables, right?
Point of order. Point of order, please.
So I, I thank you for clarifying. That helps understand what some of the challenges are. In terms of the, what's the, the issue with supporting migrants, the Red Cross, we are very clear in our guidance. There was a guidance that was revised in July of 2024 recently that is very clear on how we, within the region, can operate within the context of the migrant situation. We are there to support primarily along the border, the border states. Anything inland or away from that would be our support to partners. We would not run those shelters. We may provide assistance if our national organization gives us permission to do that. We may provide technical assistance, but all those facilities are managed by partners, not the Red Cross. We are there to support, but specifically stated in our guidance, it is something that would need to be approved by a national organization and it's specifically to support our strategic integration partners, not the Red Cross.
So how many American Red Cross shelters right now are housing migrants coming from the southern border?
Specifically.
In California?
Specifically who are not affected by a disaster.
Correct.
None. Zero.
Zero. Okay. Now, what about the unhoused, homeless?
I would say, and this is true, of all the shelters that I've been experienced, I've had experience in in the last 16 years of the I've had experience in in the last 16 years with the Red Cross, there's always a contingent of pre-disaster homeless that show up at shelters. When we open the doors, we open the doors to everyone who comes in, and as we do shelter resident transition, well, when we start to register the residents, we start to understand their needs, once we start to look at how do we move people out of the shelter within a couple days, we will do that assessment, we'll identify what their needs are, and if at some point, what we've done in the past is once everyone who evacuated and had a place to go moved on, we will post the shelter to close, and we will close the shelter, and they will move to homeless shelters or wherever else they can find.
Okay, so if the state of California declares homelessness as a disaster, what are the chances of the Red Cross bringing homeless people from Stockton into Escalon?
Zero. That's not our role. We would not do that. And we, even if Michael, who's the program manager for this county, wanted to do that, she'd have to get my approval, I'd have to go up to our vice president of logistics and operations at national headquarters, Brad Kaiserman, and explain to him what we wanted to do, and it would be up to him to decide whether we're able to do it. Now, where we would do that would depend on the facility, but we, the Red Cross, does not manage homeless shelters.
Okay. Based off my personal experience, the Red Cross is not a political organization, it's more about serving humanity and trying to keep politics out of it. And I feel like, as a council, we're not willing to consider this contract because of politics. And in my opinion, I don't agree with that. The Red Cross is here to serve people in the event of a disaster, period. And as a city council member, it'd be really embarrassing if we had a natural disaster. I'm just gonna say it, what if we have a train derailment? And we can't have, open up a shelter and have our residents go to the community center, instead, they have to drive to Oakdale, they have to drive to Modesto, because this city council says, no, I'm sorry, you can't use our community center.
With all due respect, I think that your line of thinking is sideways. What we're seeing here is a situation where we can, no one's saying we can't help people, no one's saying that we can't help our neighbors, no one's saying that. What it's saying is, we wanna be able to make the decision and not have the decision made for us. That's, there's a completely different situation there. But it has nothing to do with homeless, in my opinion, okay? It has to do with national safety and the safety of our people in our town. So as much as I appreciate what Gabriela's saying, for me, this is a situation where the legalese in this thing, you could shoot bullets through it. I mean, it's like a mosquito through a fence.
So is there anything that would give you peace of mind?
Yeah, my motion that I wanted to give is to sunset this thing, give them our contact information. We have their contact information. If there's an issue where they need us, and it looks like it's genuine, then we say yes. And it's as simple as that. Like, it's not, no one's saying we're not gonna help our neighbors, no one's saying that at all.
Looking, I think the idea here is local control, and not being something forced on us. I would caveat that if that was actually a motion to add and to allow them to do a walkthrough of the facility, get the piece and cues of everything that's out there, so you know exactly, at the current moment, what we have there. There's no projects on the horizon that I know of for the community center. If you took a map of that, you know how many bathrooms and square footages and whatnot, kitchen facilities, whatever it might be, I don't have a problem with that personally, myself.
No, I don't either.
So you have that all locked down, so you know that, you have current contact info.
I mean, that's the motion I, I'd like to make motion, is the public hearing over? The public part of it?
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this? Online? At this point, we can close public comments on this item?
I mean, I move that we sunset the contract, be very open with these people, they're, you know, I don't believe they're trying to intentionally deceive us, but I also know that we have to be very, you know, very aware of the contract that we have, or the agreement we have in front of us. And so I think we, my motion would be to sunset this agreement, get their contact information, allow them to go through the facility, so that if there was ever an issue, we can locally make a decision on it right away. That would be the motion on the table for me.
Motion on the table, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Before we go to a vote, just to be clear, without the agreement, we call you, you show up, correct? So there's no delay in that, per se?
Correct. It's the city's responsibility.
We call you, or you call us, if you have our updated contact info. There's no delay in perceived services from the Red Cross for any disaster, it's just a point of our approval at that point.
Correct.
Okay. With that, it looks like we have a motion and a second, let's go to a roll call vote.
Strowman?
Nay.
Walker?
Aye.
Ellinger?
Aye.
Egan?
Aye.
Ingle?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I request a short recess?
Yeah, a short five-minute recess, hit the restroom? I can deal with that myself. We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll be right back. Set a timer here. All right, thank you, everybody, for that break. We're gonna come on, circle back to the meeting at this point. Thank you for that break, we appreciate that. Are we back live on video there? Good to go? All right, let's circle back, we're on item 10, San Joaquin County District Attorney's Office for the Asset Forfeiture Grant. Continued discussion from last meeting, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just a brief lead-in before I turn it over to the requester. Last discussion, there were some questions on how the money can be used and who makes that determination. That information has been provided in this staff report. The county district attorney's office, and this is, you know, kind of identified in the California Health and Safety Code, district attorney's office across the state set aside 15% of their funds for these types of programs, and the intent specifically distributed, the intent really is to go towards programs that will help divert, you know, kids from getting into drugs, gangs, those types of things. So it's, you know, recreation-based, it's community-building-based types of funds and programs. So you can see and hear sole purpose of the funding program, and now I'm reading, designed to combat drug abuse and divert gang activity, and shall, wherever possible, involve educators, parents, community-based organizations, and local businesses, and uniformed law enforcement officers. So that's some of what the money is for. Later in the paragraph, the district attorney's office did indicate that they make the determination, the assistant or deputy district attorney makes the first determination, then that request is forwarded to established panel, which consists of the district attorney himself, in this case, a sheriff, Tracy Police Chief, as well as a chief of probation. So they have a panel established to review where and how the grants are being utilized. So later in the staff report, staff has put up various options, things that have either been raised at the prior council meeting, including the Healthy Room Project, and there's some information on that, and we saw a video, as well as other things that were mentioned and things that were not mentioned that staff highlighted. So sports equipment assistance was mentioned at the last council meeting. You know, we were looking at programs that we thought would fit, so city-owned Chromebook laptops, it's buying laptops, storing them at the library, being rented out by the library, but could also be used by the city for various non-sport recreation programming or other things. And then there's other groups that do teen excursions, events, that can be funded in various ways and supervised in various ways, and then just generally some non-sport programming. So we just wanted to give some, you know, a jumping-off point for the council to determine how to use the $25,000. And so that is the background, and the more information provided in this staff report. And again, I'll can turn it over to the requester at this point. Councilmember Strowman?
Thank you, Mr. French. So before we get into this discussion, I just want the public to know that the Healthy Room Project that was provided on Friday, all of the cost for that particular project were borne by the Healthy Room Project themselves. They are a nonprofit organization, so they provided the paint, they provided all the furniture, everything, and that one event was sort of a, I wouldn't say a trial, but it was really more so to expose, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it was more to expose the Escalon Police Department to what the Healthy Room Project is as a nonprofit. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and to gauge feasibility. There are some, some programs and some things out there that we would like to bring to Escalon, but just due to staffing and limited resources, we just can't put them together because we don't have enough manpower, or we don't have enough of other resources, generally manpower. But this, I was very happy with the turnout, we have the manpower, it's a very simple, simple program that can be put together quick and doesn't take a lot of time. So it's something that, unlike many programs out there, is actually scalable to Escalon.
Okay. So with the total amount being that we can make the request for, for $25,000, I was thinking that we could put $10,000 to $15,000 towards, of grant funds, towards this Healthy Room Project. So in speaking with Detective Dodge, each room costs roughly $1,500 in materials and furniture, et cetera, et cetera. So that would allow the department to seek 10 additional rooms, if you will, to look at through the city of Escalon. I know the last, at the last meeting, the mayor brought up about sports equipment assistance. And I'll be honest, on this particular one, I'm kind of on the fence through our friends at Escalon Strong. There's been a lot of sports equipment purchased recently, and we thank them for their efforts. So I don't really know if the sports equipment is really needed. And then these other, well, the next two. To apply for these funds, do we have to have a hard and fast plan for the DA of exactly what we're gonna do with every dollar of that? Or can we go, we're gonna spend, let's just, I'm just gonna throw this out, say $15,000 on the Healthy Room Project, and we're gonna throw five at teen excursion/events and five in non-sports programming. Is that enough for them to accept our request for grant money? Or do we have to be very specific on what we're gonna do with that money? The Healthy Room Project's very specific, but can we dial that back a little bit and we can fine-tune what we do with the other money potentially? I mean, we could sit here and debate this all night long, where we want to put an extra five grand. I'm just trying to figure out what we have to do so we can secure the 25 and work from that.
I don't think that question is perfectly answerable right now. I think what we would do is we would check in with the DA to see, you know, what level. As we read here, the deputy district attorney makes the determination and sends it on to the board. You know, what level of information does the board need? Would, you know, 80% of it being allocated to specific use, and then five kind of being a little more nebulous, but some guardrails on that, would that be enough? So we would, we would check with that.
I think that would be...
From what we've heard, I think at that small dollar amount, I think that would be enough from our brief conversations with them.
So, and when I talked to the assistant district attorney, they didn't need to know that we were gonna spend $3,722.16 to cart kids over to the Bay Area for the day to go to Fisherman's Wharf or something like that. They didn't need to know that particular line item. But I think that if we have a pot of money and we identify this is what we want to spend out of this quote-unquote, like $10,000 pot, and we just list items, I think that would suffice. But we could certainly verify that with them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against that at all. I think giving every kid an opportunity to do something productive that's gonna keep them out of trouble, I think is always a good idea. I think, you know, having some, maybe some input from the public as well, as to, and maybe even the kids themselves, as to what kind of, you know, programs they really would be interested in within those specific headings of like, you know, non-sport-related...
Having like a teen event of some sort with our Hogan House Park, you know, some sort of scavenger hunt mystery type, you know, there's a lot of opportunity there to bring a lot of our town folk into some sort of an event. You got snacks and everything going, and you got some community members volunteering and keeping everybody safe, and they have a good time for three to five hours, dawn to dusk, you know, whatever we decide to do. A little bit different for the community, I think I'd be on board for that for sure. Don't know what it'll look like, that's why I was like, how specific do we have to get? Can we just say, this is kind of the bucket we're looking for? If we can do that, I mean...
My experience has been, kids love scavenger hunts. Yeah, so I think things like that would go over really well.
I think, you know, get a lot more heads involved, obviously, with the community with some ideas for some events that we do onsite. I think once we get off property out of the city, it gets to be a little bit more liability-shaken with, you know, trying to get kids to bust somewhere. But if you can do some sort of an event, coordinate with the school program, depending on what we're doing there, there's a lot of opportunity there without, and I agree, without the sports kick on that. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to expand that and do some sort of an event-type thing in my mind.
Well, possibly with the council's blessing, either the city manager or I could reach out to the assistant district attorney and set list and ask them, can we, we want to expand the REC program, and we intend to use the other $10,000, and these are the possible ideas that we're actively searching community volunteers for, the scavenger hunt and other ideas, and see if that will suffice for them.
Does this have to go under the REC, the REC heading, or can it just be?
No, it doesn't.
City of Escalon.
It's just the City of Escalon.
I mean...
So, our recreation programs, so our recreation programs are run right now off of a contractor program. So if anybody wants to come in, not the free ones that we're talking about now, but if anybody wanted to come in, if you had any ideas to bring anything even non-sports to our recreation programs, and this is for the public, please, like, you can come fill out a form, and you can be an art teacher, or you can be any, that's how our recreation programs are, and that's how we bring clinics in the summer. We sometimes have had golf clinics in the past or volleyball clinics in the past, like those small things, they bring them here as a contractor and get paid, you know, and sign up through the city, and there you go, you have your program. And so you can do that in other ways that are not sports also. So just for the public's knowledge, please, if you have something to bring to the table for our youth or for anybody in recreation, we would love if we could expand our recreation programs in that way. With these funds, I'd love, I mean, I'd love to see, if we need funds to do this, that would be fantastic. I'd love to see these, you know, yeah, you're saying scavenger hunts, shoot, I want to go to a murder mystery dinner here.
I want to see Escalon's Got Talent.
Unfortunately, we can't...
I'm seeing a talent show and karaoke. It's Escalon's Got Talent right there.
But someone can actually bring them...
Not sure if we do or not, but that's one way to find out.
But this, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor...
It's for just kids.
It's just kids, unfortunately, but...
I'm not singing, trust me.
It could play a role in a mystery plot.
I think the goatee gives the kid thing away, but I don't know.
Slagging the hair as well.
I think it's important, though, I want to hear from Councilmember Engel, get his thoughts as well.
Well, perfect, I just raised my hand, so...
Sorry, I didn't even see that.
Councilman Stroman, I appreciate you doing the work to identify the funds. I do have a couple comments, one being that amount of money, rather than, you know, serve, you know, a handful or two of children, could be better utilized to serve more, more kids in town. And, you know, while we were talking, I tried to do a little search. You know, I've got to question all nonprofits for their financial responsibility. They don't currently, the Healthy Room Project currently doesn't have a rating on Charity Navigator, so it doesn't really say where their funds go. So I would be hesitant to commit, you know, a large lump sum of funds until we were able to see how that money was spent, what's spent on admin and salaries and whatnot. It was hard to identify online, but I definitely appreciate you going out and trying to find something for the kids. And I really liked all of the potential ideas that were listed here. And I really do like an idea of, you know, potentially bringing a survey to the high school and the junior high and reaching out to the kids and seeing what would benefit them. We can make choices as parents and adults, but are we really doing something that they want to do? I think that's a great place to start before we commit any monies.
So how does this, thank you for that, how does this council feel about, before we make the entire application, utilize the city's social media and solicit ideas specifically from kids? And ask them to respond or through a parent, et cetera, et cetera, but specifically targeting the kids? And then that will give us the framework that we need to put down on the grant application. I mean, Chief, if you were to receive funding for the Healthy Room Project, when would you anticipate doing the next Healthy Room Project?
Optimistically, if this is something that we're gonna continue to run with, I would say for a year is what I would be kind of shooting for optimistically. So is this a grant, the question would be, is this a grant that we're gonna be getting every year? It could be available every year? Or is it a one-and-done where we get the $25,000 and then we can never get it again? Or is it gonna be $25,000 a year?
From what I've been told, it can be a reoccurring grant opportunity. So we can apply every year.
And with that, and donations, if we're getting, also getting donations from the community, probably $6,000 a year towards the Healthy Room, and that would allow us to do for a year. And any more on top of that would be extra.
So, obviously, I know Detective Dodge, but the City of Manteca, they applied for the full $25,000 specifically for the Healthy Room Project. And so that's how they do the Healthy Room Project with...
But again, it comes to scalability.
Correct.
We can't be doing one every weekend. We don't have those types of resources. I think for, for a year would be feasible, very feasible, in my opinion, as far as
Good start.
what I can scrounge up, as far as getting people lined up and then identifying people in need and then getting everything set up.
Oh, I was just, well, you're not gonna do the next one the beginning of December, because that's right around the holidays. But if, if we issued a request for ideas through social media and closed it at, I don't know, the beginning of October, October, middle of October, that would give, and we, those ideas are brought back to council, we can talk about them, and we could apply for the grant, and whatever the council decides to, if they want, if we want to fund a portion of this towards the Healthy Room Project, and then that will help us develop the other line items for the expansion of other events slash non-sport programming.
And that's something you can discuss on the two-by, with the school district as well, for the counselors to get it out there, and you get the word out to the kids through the school as well.
That's a good idea.
I would think you could get more feedback there. Not too many teenagers and junior hires are looking at the city webpages or the Escalon resident page for that much?
No, but the parent...
Unless you're using TikTok or Snapchat, they're not gonna see it. But we can ask the schools, and the schools do, I mean, they do surveys for Homecoming Queen now that are like, sign into your thing and do it here. So they can use the same surveys they use for voting for their, like, homecoming stuff that they can for this and just put this as a survey. So if we can get permission, or we can get somebody from the high school and the middle school to...
Why eliminate that, though? We should reach out to all the schools, elementary schools too.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds like a game plan.
Let's open into the public at this point, though. We're not looking at much promotion at this point, but we went up to the public on the east.
I hear you guys probably came around to the schools.
Okay, there's your partner right there. Because who's gonna know which programs have been cut that the kids would like? Which programs the kids have been after? Someone mentioned drama, well, that used to be a high school thing, drama classes. Art programs, photography contests, just everything under the sun. That's who you go to. You go to the superintendent, you find out what's going on out there, what would benefit the kids, what would they be, love to be engaged in. I guarantee you, high school kids are not interested in making candles. Okay? So find out how you can use the money. That is a discretionary fund. It's not as detailed as you think when you request it. You can always, like they said, ask for it more. I do love the program you're doing with the kids in the school, in the home, the healthy project. That is something that should be ongoing. But again, first, secure your funds. Everybody's talking about, ooh, all the wonderful things we can do. Secure your funds. And then once you've secured that, go to the high school, or as you're securing them, and find out what kind of partnership. Because in the end, guess what? It's the teachers that have to buy in, that help supervise those kids, and it's your volunteers out here in the community, because otherwise, it's not gonna happen. You don't have the volunteer buy-in, you don't have the teacher buy-in, you don't have the parent buy-in. All the beautiful plans mean nothing. Plenty of after-school programs out there in California that you can bring into this community. Just go to the source, go to the schools, find out what they want, find out what the kids want, find out what the kids are willing to do. I love the scavenger hunts, we did those, and the whole mystery dinners, Folsom, by the way, has really good Mr., you know, murder ones. But, you know, a lot of opportunities out there. You just have to reach out to some of the agencies in here other than the schools. You got Center for Human Services, does all sorts of teen programs, opportunities to partner everywhere. Save your money, expand your money, and really find out what the kids really want and need. Because otherwise, we as adults like the plan and say, and say, and do, all this is wonderful, and the kids are gonna, yeah, okay, yeah. And then they don't participate, and then the program falls flat on its face. So I hear a lot of ideas out here, but you are all missing the starting point, you know, before you go. Secure your funds, go talk to the schools. That's simple. Get it started before you start your chickens, you know, before the eggs hatch there. So, okay?
Thanks.
I really like the idea of the Healthy Room Project. I was a foster child, and I know what it's like growing up without having things that belong to you, and it really does make a difference in a child's life. I also strongly encourage you to think about the children that do not play sports and offer some sort of other activity. But I am a little bit against the school aspect of it. I think that there's a lot that's hidden from administration in schools is for families that fear maybe CPS getting involved. And so I just don't think that that should be your sole source of pulling people. I think that maybe you should offer something within City Hall where parents can either call in or come in and fill out a form if they also are in need. Another alternative or something you can offer is, there are additional fees with school that some parents can't afford, gym clothes, gym shoes. You see kids that have shoes that are ripped and falling off their feet. And there isn't really much in this community or statewide that offers something for parents that are struggling and need, you know, help buying their kids a pair of shoes or something of the sort. So I think that while you're doing rooms, backpacks, or, you know, school supplies aren't really as needed as much. But the other thing is, I want to emphasize that as someone who has, I have a seven, a 12, a 23, and a 25-year-old, and the high school, I know, provides a lot for the kids to do. And they're also at an age where they're either driving or their friends are driving. And so there's a lot more for them to explore. But in that younger age group, there's really not a lot. I mean, even my son coming out of sixth grade, he can't do sports at El Portal. You got Center for Human Services, does all sorts of teen programs, opportunities to partner everywhere. Save your money, expand your money, and really find out what the kids really want and need. Because otherwise, we as adults like the plan and say, and say, and do, all this is wonderful, and the kids are gonna, yeah, okay, yeah. And then they don't participate, and then the program falls flat on its face. So I hear a lot of ideas out here, but you are all missing the starting point, you know, before you go. Secure your funds, go talk to the schools. That simple. Get it started before you start your chickens, you know, before the eggs hatch there. So, okay?
Thanks.
I really like the idea of the Healthy Room Project. I was a foster child, and I know what it's like growing up without having things that belong to you, and it really does make a difference in a child's life. I also strongly encourage you to think about the children that do not play sports and offer some sort of other activity. But I am a little bit against the school aspect of it. I think that there's a lot that's hidden from administration in schools is for families that fear maybe CPS getting involved. And so I just don't think that that should be your sole source of pulling people. I think that maybe you should offer something within City Hall where parents can either call in or come in and fill out a form if they also are in need. Another alternative or something you can offer is there are additional fees with school that some parents can't afford, gym clothes, gym shoes. You see kids that have shoes that are ripped and falling off their feet, and there isn't really much in this community or statewide that offers something for parents that are struggling and need, you know, help buying their kids a pair of shoes or something of the sort. So I think that while you're doing rooms, backpacks or, you know, school supplies aren't really as needed as much. But the other thing is, I wanna, I wanna emphasize that as someone who has, I have a seven, a 12, a 23, and a 25-year-old, and the high school I know provides a lot for the kids to do, and they're also at an age where they're either driving or their friends are driving, and so there's a lot more for them to explore. But in that younger age group, there's really not a lot. I mean, even my son coming out of sixth grade, he can't do sports at El Portal. There's really, there's a youth center, but there's mostly high school kids. They don't want to go and mingle with them. And I don't want high school to be the only one we focus on. The fifth graders are in that awkward age, the sixth graders don't have the same opportunities that the seventh and the eighth graders have, and so just being diverse in all the children that we're looking at. But I think most importantly, what I would like to see in part of our community is, like Dave was saying, a scavenger hunt, movie nights, popcorn in the park, you know, have picnic in the park, things that bring us together as a community and not just single out a specific group of kids that are in need, but also give back to all of our kids of all ages, something they can all do together, and have our council members or our city manager or our chief, you know, out doing the activities with them and really show that we are, you know, a bound community.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll close public comment on this item. At this point, then, what direction do you need from us on this topic and item here?
I think if the council would agree to it, Mayor Protam and I can, and Mr. French can approach this subject at our next two-by-two meeting with, I don't think we want, we want to reach out to the schools, but we're, we want to reach out to the schools as a vehicle to get the information back from the kids. And so just asking if they, if we could work in partnership with the school district to try to reach out to the kids themselves, either through a little online survey or a little paper or something. And if we get that, then we could put together the framework, how they can respond back to it, and then solicit ideas. So really, at this point, I think it's a matter of getting consensus from the council that we bring it up to our partners at the school district, just as an avenue. However, I think it's important that we also reach out to other schools, other private schools and charter schools, not just the quote-unquote "school district," because we do have students within Esalen that go to Rip and Christian and other private schools. And so I think if we're doing this holistically, we need to include those children as well.
I'm not sure I'd reach out to Rip and Christian directly, but I would, as members of the community, if we're eating all the avenues with the paper and everything, that's where they would come in. I know back in the day, a long time ago, when I was in school, when Little League came around, we got a piece of paper that teachers passed out saying, hey, Little League sign-ups are coming up, on top of Esalen times and whatnot. Before social, we'd come up with something that you can put a QR code onto a survey. Kids can take it home to their parents from the school, get some coverage there as well. That's just another idea, but.
I think to Gabrielle's point, the schools are a good avenue, but they're not the end-all-be-all. It's, we need to look at this holistically for even the homeschool kids. There are kids within our community that are homeschooled. We need to figure out how to tap into that resource as well. If we're doing this for the kids, we have to do it for all the kids, period. So do we have consensus from the council that Mayor Protam and I discussed this with our partners at the school district?
I have no problem with that. I think it's a great first avenue to get some ideas. Is there a deadline thus getting this grant request in so we can get the money?
No.
That's just an ongoing whenever kind of situation? Do they run out of money?
No, every year. They just.
It's open the whole year?
All year.
You get one dip at the pond?
Correct.
Okay.
And if, if the grant goes through, then they do a ceremonial check, and you'll probably be there as the mayor, getting the ceremony whole check, but yeah. I would like to, before we close this item, I just would really like to thank Chief and SRO Harrison and all the men and women at Esalen PD and Detective Dodge. Feel like we did a lot of good on Friday, so.
That's what it sounds like. I'm good with it as well. Okay. Next up, item 11, agenda item request for a fee dismissal for the senior yoga program. Who's got this item?
This is the first time we have seen it, so I'll turn it over to the requester.
Now I'm just the Requester. Thanks, French. Appreciate it. So, yeah, this, this item, we talked about briefly during council communications last week, or last meeting. I do understand that there was some confusion regarding, we have a couple yoga programs currently within the city. We have a chair yoga program at the library on Mondays that runs every Monday. We have a yoga program for adults. I don't know the specific days of the week for that program. Do you know what they are?
Thursdays, I think.
On Thursdays. But this particular item was brought to me by the senior community, and they were requesting that we look at doing a yoga program specifically for seniors, ages 62 and older. And so typically, when, if it's related to seniors, this council will waive any use of the community center or waiving any fees for the rec, if this is tied under the rec programs. And so the goal would be to waive the 25% administration fee for rec because it's tied to seniors, and as long as it doesn't impact any other programs, and depending on the number of participants, I see that we could possibly do this at the community center. And so the goal would be to have it at the community center on Wednesday mornings at 10:00 a.m. and Friday mornings at 10:00 a.m., as long as it doesn't impact any of our other existing agreements. I mean, we could do it in the lobby, and then if there are more participants, move into the big room. But that, those are just logistical items that I think we need to take into consideration. But this would be specifically for seniors, ages 62 and older.
I have a question.
Sure.
The person who's directing this class, have we always already talked to the person? And is the yoga instructor, and the yoga instructor wants to do these times at these locations?
Right, so there are actually two instructors. The Wednesday morning instructor is Annette Wing. Annette Wing is our current rec program yoga instructor, and she always wanted to do a senior-based yoga program, and then COVID hit, and it kind of fell off the wayside. So Annette would lead the Wednesday morning program at 10:00 a.m. And then there is another yoga instructor that leads yoga in Oakdale that a lot of our seniors currently go to her program in Oakdale. And so she would come here and do a yoga program in Esalen so that those seniors that currently go to Oakdale don't have to travel to Oakdale, they can come here on Friday mornings.
So my question is, have, have they put in a request to be a contract instructor here, and then they won't be able to do it without the 25% be waived? Or is, is that still, they haven't put in to be the contract instructor quite yet? Like, we don't have the program, they have not asked to do this yet officially?
Correct. They haven't gone through the official program. I do know that Ms. Wing, well, Ms. Wing is a contracted instructor because she's currently running the adult program on Thursdays. So it would just be an extension for her program on Wednesday mornings specifically for seniors.
As a contractor, does she set the rates on how much it's gonna cost to be in that program?
So that did come up in the discussion.
Because if we're giving 25% off, I would expect a great reduction in the fees for our seniors.
So.
Not more profit for a contractor.
That's correct. And so the seniors that approached me with this idea do not want to set a fee program or a fee for the program. They would actually prefer it to be a free will offering. So if a senior can only afford $5, then they will donate $5, and both instructors have agreed to that.
So I would love to see this as on paper on one of the contract proposal forms. So that's their job. Usually, if you're a contract, we are proposing to be a contract instructor, you just fill out the form, and you say, I would like to provide this for free if I can get the 25% waived, and then that would go to the Recreation Commission, and they would either approve or disprove, and then it would come to us because it has to do with funds, whether we approve or disprove that. So usually, that's how a program would work, and it's kind of, I mean, I would love to consider this, but it's hard when we don't actually have those contractors here to ask them those types of questions and.
Well, so this is the first discussion of this item, and so what I would do is, I would go back, I could work with them to fill out any forms that they would have. We could invite them to come to a council, the next council meeting, if the council so chooses. If you guys had questions, you could ask questions and go that route. I honestly, I wasn't aware of the contractor form, per se, but this was just for initial discussion to see if the council would consider it.
I'm willing to consider a discussion about the item, but I think knowing that there's a process to go through the Recreation Commission first, I think it should go through them first procedurally before we jump the process we have in place. I don't think you're gonna have much, you know, based on what you've said, I would be in favor of reducing or eliminating that, if it's a free program or something like that for seniors myself, but I think we need to follow the process.
Of course. I don't disagree.
Going through rec and then coming to us for, actually seen it on paper as Councilman Walker had mentioned.
I would agree.
So Frank, would I legally, would I be allowed to present this idea at, at a rec commission meeting with the two instructors? I mean, is there, there's no issues with that, correct?
It seems to me it'd make more sense just for the people that want to do it to present. You could be there and provide public comment. I mean, I just, it's gonna come back before this council as an item, so I'd like to keep a healthy separation. But as part of that staff reporter communication to that commission, the background, I'm sure, will clarify that, you know, this came to the council on Councilmember Strowman's request. It was discussed, the thought was to give it, have these people present. And so I would just do it that way.
I can definitely work with them to put together the documentation that's needed and then follow the process. I just was, just wanted to start the conversation to see if the, if it's something that the council would at least consider entertaining, but definitely agree with following the process we already have in place.
If we could move on to public comment, if there are any in the room here or online on this item? I don't see any takers, so we'll close public comment on this. So we have direction, then, for cities to have in for your group to move forward on that? Great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on to council communications. Councilman Engel, let's start off with you tonight.
I have no further communications for tonight.
Thank you for that. Councilman Strowman?
Yeah, a couple things. Justin, as, well, as Justin reminded us, tomorrow's National Night Out. Also, coming up Thursday is the first day of school for all Esalen Unified students, so good luck to all of the teachers and administrators and students for Esalen Unified as well as all of our other neighboring schools. And last, but certainly not least, I'm sure I'm missing something, but get well wishes to Jettie on her, on her recent fall. Sounds like she's back on the mend. And also, a little closer to home, get well wishes to Councilmember Engel. It's no fun being sick. I hope you feel better soon.
You for that. Councilman Walker?
Sure. Good, long meeting, everybody. I guess first we'll say we have a name for the ballot measure that's coming up. It's called Measure P. On the website, there are some informative documents, and that's for the community. We, they are for us to inform and educate, which is the only thing we as counselors are allowed to do, is inform and educate. There is a fact sheet available, and there is frequently asked questions available on the website, so please make sure you take a look at those so you can be educated on what's coming up on the ballots here in November. Please make sure you are registered and you go out and vote, either way. So, let's see. And then it looks like there are some jobs available, one for police officer, one for that recreation assistant, and it was mentioned that our soccer coming up is super full. Those days are 12-hour days, which is just, that's a lot of kids that we are benefiting out there, and it's gonna be long, and soccer is hot. You never think about that, but in, oh, it hits August, September, those are some long hot days. I just wanted to put out there that one of the reasons why they're so long is we only have one park available. We have the one park with one bathroom, with the bathroom available. Just throwing it out there that we could look into solving that problem. I would love to support or have a discussion in the future about how we can possibly install a bathroom at another park so that we can split those games into another park and have those facilities available, and then we wouldn't have the 12-hour days. Is that something we can discussion in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. I wouldn't be against that.
No problem here.
Go ahead and, on an agenda, coming up, please.
Got it?
Great. And then thank you, Chief, for the help, bringing the Healthy Room Project to fruition. That was great for our community as well. And, oh, and this, this, the discussion on these recreation programs, it sounds so great with this extra money coming in. I just want to put it out there that a lot of these programs that we're talking about, like the scavenger hunts and the movies in the park and those types of things, Esalen's done a really great job historically putting those on as community members, as volunteers. Lions Club does a great job for our community, but we used to have more like the Rotary and the Kiwanis Club was very strong at one time, putting on things like the Easter egg hunt, we all remember. And so just know that a lot of this is not historically put on the city's back and the government's back to fund these things, but it is volunteers and it is community members that go out and make sure that they are on foot in the community, providing for each other. So if you have the time to volunteer, please get out there, help our kids. Park Feet was fantastic, loved to see all the people out there participating in the community. Weather was fantastic, and I think that helped with everybody staying out. But I'd love to see people out there again. So do your part to come out and help the kids, and hopefully we can get some more of our community events going on once again. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Just to piggyback on that, I think it's, the more each one of us individually puts into our town, the better our town's gonna be. So, you know, if you can volunteer a little bit or a lot, you know, you may not think it goes a long ways, but, you know, volunteering an hour here and there goes a long ways when you put all those hours collectively together. So definitely food for thought. I just wanted to compliment the staff, doing a great job, keep up the good work. And I wanted to, you know, tell Chief, great job on the Healthy Room Project. And Slenda, you know, this is a really important thing to our town with the financial stuff, and I really appreciate the effort you're putting in, so it doesn't go overlooked. Other than that, remember, we have a election coming up here soon, so sign up to be a poll worker if you can. We can always use them. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I go several sentiments there with the staff and everything. Thank you for all the great work. I'll try and keep it brief with previously stated schools in session. I'll try and keep it brief with, uh, previously stated, schools in session, not just in our town, in other towns, wherever we travel. It's going to take a while for those kids to get back on some of things, maybe staying on the sidewalks and whatnot, be a little more diligent with your driving, slow down a little bit more, look out for those little rabbits running out in between cars when they're parked in the neighborhoods. Just be on alert, keep our kids safe out there and drive safely. Um, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting shortly. We're going to go here to a closed session and we will come back, uh, with any news if there's something to report at that point. Thank you.
I don't even know what the heck any of the meats.
I don't even know.
I have to like think about that.
We are back from a closed session and there is nothing to report. Thank you everybody for hanging out with us.